Good evening. Thanks for joining us here this evening. My name is David Ferris. I'll be acting as chair this evening for the zoning board of appeals for our meeting this Wednesday, October 23, 2019. First of all, I'm going to introduce the people sitting here at the table. To my far right is Steve McGoon, Director and Assistant Town Manager. Adjacent to him is Gideon Schreiber, Senior Planner. Next is Michael Mina, Zoning Officer. Adjacent to Mike is Luis Avedi, the Zoning Assistant. To my immediate right is Christopher Heap, who will be acting as clerk this evening. I'm sorry, I skipped over our newest alternate member, and I wanted to welcome our newest alternate member, Frances Goyas-Flore. So, nice to have you here.
Thank you.
So Frances is here, is an alternate member, but will be acting as a full board member this evening. Then adjacent to me immediately is Christopher Heap, who's going to be acting as clerk this evening. To my left is Michael Branglin, also an alternate member, who's going to be acting as a full board member this evening. And then at the end is Kelly Donato, full board member. So we have a number of items on the agenda this evening. The first will be approval of administrative minutes, which we'll get into. For cases pending, we've got three: 1820 Clyde Road, 101103 Moore Street, and then 19 Coolidge Hill Ave. We are actually going to discuss 19 Coolidge Hill Avenue first. And we have one continued case, which is 3638 Hillcrest Circle. That is requested to be continued to the November hearing. So with that said, I think I'm going to ask anybody who's going to be speaking this evening to please stand up and raise your right hand. And if you would repeat after me, please. So I swear that the testimony that I give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So hope you got it. Thank you. Great. So first, I guess, we'll get into the approval of the minutes from August and also September. So have we all had a chance to read those, guys? We have. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Well, I just have a question, Mr. Chair. Where I missed, I was present but missed part of the August hearing. Should I abstain from August? I was hoping to...
Excuse me, I can't hear what you're saying. Could you please speak?
Where I was present, but I had to leave mid-hearing in August. Should I abstain? I'm wondering from the approval of those minutes.
Since my... For the majority of the meeting?
Yes, okay.
It's okay. You want to write on the minutes?
Great. So first of all, for the August minutes, August 20th, would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the board approve the minutes for August 20th, 2019.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And then the second set of meetings is for September 25th. Is there a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? None. Great, thank you. Okay. You know, actually, you arrived, you just walked in the room, right? So I'm going to ask you to please stand so you can be sworn in. If you'd please repeat after me, raise your right hand, and aye, and say your name, please.
Aye.
Swear that the testimony that I give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So hope you got it. Great, thank you. Great. So as I mentioned, the first case that we're going to discuss or review is 19 Coolidge Hill Avenue. So actually, Christopher, if you could read the notice, please?
Sure. The notice for 19 Coolidge Hill Road is Paul A. Ferreira, Blue Hawk Investments LLC, 275 Grove Street, Newton, Mass. 02466 for 19 Coolidge Hill. Owner LLC. Request the zoning board of appeals grant a comprehensive permit in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, for demolition of the existing industrial building to construct 113-unit residential building with structured parking and ancillary retail commercial space located in the I-2 Industrial Zone and zoning district.
Great, thank you. So we're actually going to turn the discussion over to, immediately to Steve McGoon, so he can explain the process here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you, I provided to the board tonight a memo drafted by Gideon and myself, which addresses directly the 40B application. So as some of you may not know, but a comprehensive permit is, under Chapter 40B, is a provision in the state law that allows a project to be exempted from some of the regulations within the zoning rules and regulations that a community has in order to allow more housing development to occur. In this case, they applied for a comprehensive permit under General Law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, in September. And the Chapter B, or excuse me, the Chapter 40B regulations allow for a safe harbor provision for a municipality. The most common of those is that you have 10% of your housing stock is affordable, deed restricted affordable. In this case, though, there's a second provision that allowed, because we're not at 10%, that does allow for safe harbor, and that would be the land area dedicated to affordable housing in the community is at 1.5% of the total land area or more. We believe that after doing some analysis, that we've met that 1.5% land area, which does give us the opportunity to exert safe harbor. That is a function or role that this board, the zoning board of appeals, would perform or find. So before you tonight is the calculation of, the basics of the calculation for the general land area minimum. And as you can see in the table provided, we found that properties within the SHI or the housing inventory, subsidized housing inventory, is 37.74 acres. Group homes represent .63 acres for a total, and the total land area is 1,673.716 acres. So the representative percentage would be 2.29%. Obviously well in excess of the 1.5%. Based on that, Department of Community Development and Planning suggests that Watertown has achieved that statutory requirement as set forth in Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, and 760 CMR 5603, Subparagraph 3, because our subsidized housing inventory is above that 1.5% of land area. Because we've achieved that 1.5%, staff would suggest the board consider the following. Number one, that we assert safe harbor, determined to finalize the documentation, and send notice to applicant in DHCD within 15 days of the opening of this hearing. And number two, that we continue the comprehensive permit as agreed by the applicant and the town to January 22 of 2020. A third option before the board is to just deny the permit based on the finding of safe harbor. So with that, I would turn it back to the board for any questions or discussion.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on... No, I don't think we have any questions, though.
Then, Mr. Chair, in consideration of the information that Mr. McGoon just presented and the recommendation of staff, I would move that the board determine that the town of Watertown has achieved one of the statutory minimum standards set forth in General Law's Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, and 760 CMR 56.033, because the town's subsidized housing inventory, as maintained by the Department of Housing and Community Development, on the date that the application was received, comprises more than 1.5% of the town's total land area zone for residential, commercial, and industrial use pursuant to General Law's Chapter 40B, Section 20. And that the board elect to proceed with the full local hearing, with the board having the right to deny the application or to grant the application with conditions, and with the applicant having no right of appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee from the board's decision. And finally, that the board authorize the vice chair to finalize, execute, and send written notice to the applicant with a copy to DHCD to invoke the 1.5% general land area minimum, statutory minima, within 15 days of the opening of the October 23, 2019, public hearing on this application.
Thank you, Christopher. So there's been a motion made, as Christopher just mentioned. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Great.
And I'd follow that one up with another, with another motion, that the board vote to continue the public hearing on this comprehensive permit for 19 Coolidge Hill Road until January 22, 2020.
Thank you again. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. So next, we are going to go on to 1820 Clyde Road. So we're going to, all five of us will be voting on 1820 Clyde Road. And then for the final case, 101103, Member Donato will recuse herself. But for this first application that we'll be reviewing, all five members will be voting. So, Christopher, if you'd like to read the notice, please.
Sure. Ara Miller, 159B Tripelo Road, Belmont, Massachusetts, 02478. Request the zoning board of appeals grant an amendment to special permit number AA 9327 in accordance with Watertown zoning ordinance, Section 9.00. Amend special permit to alter conditions of approval. Condition number eight, requiring installation of a three feet of landscaping along length of driveway located in the T-two-family zoning district.
Great, thank you very much. Are you the applicant? Actually, if you go right there?
Yeah, that's why I'm missing most of this. So I can hear you.
Okay, if you, so that we can all hear you, if you would go there. And then if you are unable to hear us, you just let us know, and we'll work that through.
My name is Ara Miller. I'm 84 years old, and I spent 77 years in Watertown. But I would appreciate a few minutes of your time to state my case, as I was not given the opportunity by the planning board. My house burned down. And when I rebuilt the house, I built it on the exact footing that I had before. The planning board, I think, added these provisions. I'm sorry. Can, you can't hear?
Yeah.
Shall I repeat this?
No, no, no.
The adding, the planning board added these provisions, even though I didn't make any changes to the property except to rebuild it. It burnt to the ground. I accepted the provisions, not realizing the problems it would create in the future. In order to expedite the rebuilding, I just signed it. It was a two-family house with a legal third occupancy, and that's what it is today. We haven't had a problem with this in 50 years, and it's become a problem now. And I have pictures and diagrams of why this could create a hardship for me. I don't know how to go about presenting them.
Well, for the information that you have, have you submitted this information?
I didn't.
We submitted it at the planning board level, but I don't know if it was part of their record.
So it's not part of the package that we reviewed? I don't know that we have any photographs or anything. So you brought photos with you this evening?
He did, yes. I'm his attorney.
Okay, great, great. So how do you want to distribute those, then? I think we, if you're going to show photographs, we would need them for the record, and we would need to hold on to them.
Yes.
We can just give them.
You want it to look back. Okay.
There are a number of photographs that show the condition at the driveway that's of concern.
Okay.
There are also various other photographs that show other areas of Watertown where sheer driveways are used. These are probably the most informative of the site.
Okay. Great, thank you. Just out of curiosity, for the other photographs, do you have addresses of the properties of the other photographs?
Do you have addresses of the other properties?
I didn't want to involve them. I didn't want to cause them a problem, but they're all in one area, and I didn't...
Are they in?
I deliberately did not want to cause anyone a problem.
Yeah, I understand, and I appreciate that. Are they in the area of your home?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So if you want me to pass those this way. Great, so you can continue.
Go ahead.
Go up there?
No, you can continue if you want.
Well, they want, I have 15, I have a 15-foot wide driveway. They want me to put a three-foot that leads me 12 feet. On the other side, I have this, I've got it in the picture. You can see it juts out two and a half feet.
Yes.
If I put my car in there, I can't, I can't open the door. And not only that, it's only five feet high. So anyone that walks in and under that could really hit their head on it. See if I got a picture of it here. There it is. That's the thing that juts out. And there's the car that can't open the door.
You know, I think it's also illustrated on the site plan.
It is.
The condition that you're talking about, it's the bay that can't levers out.
If, yeah, if you open the door, you can't open it.
And I can just add to it, Mr. Ferris, it's not only where the bay window juts out, but it's not shown on the plan.
There's a chimney, right.
Chimney close. And the chimney close is the one that's only five feet off from the surface of the driveway.
Yeah.
So effectively, for Mr. Miller, that means he can't drive under that portion of the close.
So the new house was built wider than the old house because of these cantilevers?
Was the new house built wider than the old house?
No, it's in the exact same footprint.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, continue.
I don't know what, where to go from here.
So if I can continue for Mr. Miller, under the existing special permit, we recognize that Special Condition 8 required landscaping to be maintained, in particular, that three-foot wide strip that runs between the lot line and where the driveway would be if the pavement were removed. Where the chimney close is, and the bay windows are, is effectively a choke point in the driveway. And in addition to the problem of getting a vehicle underneath the chimney close, as Mr. Miller points out, it's also difficult for a person to walk under that. So effectively, the driveway is a little narrower already than what it would otherwise be. I should point out that this, the existing condition, the location of the driveway, has been the same since the special permit was granted back in 1993. And under Chapter 40A, Section 7, the town would have lost the ability to enforce that special condition unless action was brought within 10 years of the violation. So I think that we're well past that timeframe for bringing a violation action. What Mr. Miller wants to do, I think, is to do the honorable thing and request that the board amend Special Condition 8, and he's willing to consider alternatives that would mitigate the impact of that pavement area. For example, in the area of the pavement that would remain, he'd be willing to put in a pervious surface, which would tend to fulfill the goal of the zoning ordinance with respect to retaining stormwater runoff on the property. And in the areas that would not be affected by the, what I would refer to as the choke points, make those areas landscaped. So I've got a very rough sketch that I could provide the board, showing the area that we think we would still like to have as a surface that can be driven over, and then the remainder could be landscaped to try to fulfill as much of Special Condition 8 as possible.
So, but you haven't submitted that sketch again?
I have not, no.
And so, I just, I'm curious, was it the same scenario at the, at the planning hearing that you, there's parts of your application that you hadn't submitted, actually, and that you were just bringing forth during the meeting? Did you do the same thing at the planning hearing?
That's correct, yes.
And is there a reason why you just didn't submit it as part of the package, that we would all have it to look at versus?
Not really, no.
Okay, so you say you've got a rough sketch. I think you should submit that. It's different, apparently, than, than the survey, right?
It's working from the same plan, but I've done multiple copies here.
Great, thank you.
I highlighted the three-foot wide area that would need to be landscaped, and crosshatched or with diagonal lines show a portion that my client would like to see allowed to remain as a paved area. And again, as I mentioned, he's willing to also consider a porous material there for mitigating runoff issues.
So to kind of compare this to the survey, or that the engineering plan that's been drawn, for spaces one, two, and three, you are requesting not to do the landscape buffer, and for spaces four and five, that you would propose to do the landscape buffer?
That's correct, yes.
Great, thanks. Great. Any, any more to your presentation, or?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, great, thanks. Actually, Mr. Mina, could you maybe explain from the town's perspective what we're talking about and...
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. So this came about originally from a parking violation of parking in the front yard, where there was previously landscaping and has since been put as gravel. So upon that, we had met with the owner of the property, and in doing so, found out about the previous approvals, and in looking at those previous approvals, seeing the condition of the land... the condition of the landscape. And as, um, the owner had stated, the house had, had significant fire damage back around two thousand three, two thousand four. They filed for a building permit to, um, uh, rebuild that and, uh, with that application is the plot plan that you see before you tonight that showed, uh, the three-foot landscape buffer. The original approval for the two-family with accessory unit allowed, as it describes in the report, as stacked parking in the driveways you see it and then described two spaces allowed at the mouth of the driveway. Um, so essentially, if you're looking at that plan, um, you see parking space number one, they also allowed basically a parking space that would essentially fit where you see the sewer line, uh, kind of at that angle. And that's where, um, previously the, the parking wa- was approved, and then beyond that, where you see the water was where there was landscaping, where there is now gravel.
And, and with that, then, with that one parking space, um, in front of the house itself, would that allow for six spaces on the property?
Uh, es- essentially, yeah. So i- it's a little confusing, the fact that in nineteen ninety-three, they approved four stacked spaces and then a fifth adjacent to the first one here. Um, but then in two thousand six, they filed with their building permit to just stack the five. Uh, so it didn't not show that additional space. Um, so again, in, in, um, finding this, we informed, uh, the property owner that it looks like there was supposed to be a three-foot landscape buffer. It appears that he is not in compliance with the original approval in nineteen ninety-three, and we ordered the removal of that three-foot landscape buffer or to file for a petition, um, to request to eliminate it, which is why the applicant is here this evening. Uh, and I just do want to talk to one point as far as the ten-year statute. Um, it's my understanding, ten-year statute is related to building and structural violations and not necessarily site improvements or use.
I, I do just want to mention that when I was, uh, taking a look on, on Sunday, that there were, uh, two cars parked in the front yard. One was actually parked, neither, none, no cars were parked in what's designated as spaces, but two were parked in front of the house, one in front of the porch and then the other in front of the, the bay on the, on the crushed stone.
We have noted that also, but we were holding off any enforcement until after the resolve of this meeting.
Okay.
If I may, I would, um, add though, that in the original special permit, uh, the zoning board found, uh, that, uh, the two spaces at the mouth of the driveway side by side are considered front yard parking, but are allowed at the discretion of the board. So-
Yeah, what, what I saw would have allowed three cars parked there. There was one car parked in front of the porch, a small, a small car, and then there was a car parked adjacent to that, and then there were no cars parked in the actual driveway. What I, what I, that's what I saw on Sunday, just for your information.
Okay, well, I, I think my client recognizes that the maximum number of front yard spaces could, uh, is limited to two, not three.
Okay. Um, at this point, I'm going to open it up to the public to see if anybody has any, um, comments or questions. Okay, great. And so we will then start with our own questions. Member Donato, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question. In one of the photos that you submitted tonight, uh, the neighbors to your right have, um, a sign that says "private driveway this side." So I'm wondering if there's been a problem with cars accessing their driveway to get in and out?
Um, my client tells me that there hasn't been, um, and I'm not, I, I can't re- I, I'm not sure which particular photograph you're looking at, but, um, he has a good rapport with the neighbors who are at, uh, fourteen Clyde, I think is the, uh, Butter's address. Uh, and in fact, uh, the existing situation has been beneficial to both property owners because their driveway is also somewhat narrow, uh, and at times they've, uh, temporarily, uh, used a portion of the, of the other part of the driveway for access in and out. So, um, I'm not aware of there being any issue with the neighbor.
And a question for staff. Staff hasn't received any, any complaints from neighbors or any comments since the planning board hearing?
Yes, I have received comments from the next-door neighbor.
She said that your next-door neighbor did make her comments.
Pretending to wanting to put a fence up in between the driveways.
My client would, would be, uh, fine with putting up a fence if that would be helpful.
Okay.
Any other questions, Member Donato?
Just a, a question on that front yard gravel space. So the most recent building permit that was submitted did not depict that, although the prior special permit included that. So is that, is that something that we could condition tonight, potentially, if we wanted to-
The-
longer permit that, since it's at our discretion?
I, I believe so, and just to clarify, the entire gravel area was not what was approved by the previous board for parking. Um, the previous board interpreted the definition of front yard previously as being the whole width of the front of the property to the setback or the, or the front of the house, rather than under today's, uh, interpretation, we look at front yard parking just being between the, the front of the building and to the side of the building. So when you read the report, uh, from the nineteen ninety, which we did not provide to, to the, to the board, I apologize, uh, from the nineteen ninety-three decision, they considered those first spaces, that first parking space, as front yard parking, even though it's to the side of the house. So it, so the parking that you see now in the gravel encroaches much further into the front yard than what the board had approved before, and in two thousand two was actually landscaping and was removed sometime after that where you see the gravel. Uh, so the applicant or the tenants, I don't know who, um, is essentially driving over the raised berm, which is, would typically be a curb, and then parking in that area, dragging gravel out into the street. There's gravel on the sidewalk. Um, so that i- is why there's such a concern for that front yard parking.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add a quick point to that. Um, you know, I, I think the applicant before you is asked to eliminate the landscape buffer along the side of the driveway. Um, you know, I think there's, uh, an enforcement issue in terms of the front yard parking, which, you know, staff can deal with. I, I'm not sure if it would, you know, obviously the board has some discretion, but I, I think we should try to stick to the question that the applicant's put before you, which is, can he eliminate his side landscaped area? Um, and unless you feel necessary to deal with the front yard parking, we'll, we'll deal with that in terms of the enforcement action.
Okay, great. And how about the, the extent of, uh, crushed stone, um, in the front yard? It basically is the full front yard.
And again, I think that's something that we can deal with as an enforcement issue and, um, unless you feel that the, you know, the elimination of this landscape buffer, you know, that you would do a, a swap or something of that nature, unless you're talking about that, I think the issue of the gravel in the front yard and the parking in the front yard is something we can deal with as, as enforcement.
But if, but if we were to discuss, um, requiring front yard landscaping that would not be crushed stone as some type of mitigation for a, a portion on the other side?
You, you could do that.
That might be a possibility.
Yep.
But, but thank you. Member Bremman?
I don't really have any questions. Um, I think I'll just kind of share a comment that I, I too would, I would like, I would be more inclined to support some form of relief, depending on how the other board members feel. Um, if it involved, um, certainly mitigation of, of the crushed stone issue, it sounds like, and I don't know, is that potentially a violation itself? Uh, Mr. Magoon, the crushed stone, is that something that might need to be addressed regardless of what we do tonight?
You, you could certainly draw that conclusion.
So I, I would, I would be, uh, much more supportive if there was something, uh, conditioned on that a- and if we had assurances that that's something that we could, that would be enforced, um, um, i- in terms of granting, uh, any relief, but I'll, I'll leave it to the other members of the board, their comments or questions.
Thank you. Member Heath?
Uh, no questions, just, I guess, sort of a general comment, which is that I, I'd, given the requests you're making of the board, I would normally expect to see considerably more from the applicant in terms of application materials and a presentation as to how you're proposing to satisfy at least the intent of the original condition that was imposed, and it's, your property's been subject to for twenty years. Um, all you've shown us, what you're proposing to eliminate, uh, the, a three-foot length of landscaping that runs the entire length of your property front to back, and all you've shown us is, you know, the elimination of some of what was originally acquired and none of what you are actually showing to propose, other than the, the area that you're proposing to cover. Meanwhile, you've got, uh, eliminated landscaping, which was replaced by crushed stone, and parked cars in the front. So I, I'm not even there in terms of being able to support your application, but I'm certainly not there based on the level of application materials that you've presented to the board. Uh, you've got to show us at a minimum what you're proposing to do here, uh, and the board needs to be in a position to evaluate whether it's good enough, and I don't know that we're there, based on what you, well, I know that we are, I am not there, based on what you presented to the board. So at a minimum, if others on the board are inclined to sort of support this in concept, I think I'd want to see a much more rigorous proposal in terms of what you were proposing to actually provide on your property.
Would it be, uh, helpful for the board if we were to, uh, continue the hearing for, till, uh, the next, uh, scheduled hearing and present in the interim, uh, something that, uh, might be more, uh, along the lines of what you're suggesting you'd like to see now?
Perhaps, but I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just speaking for myself at the moment, so we'll see where everybody else wants to take it.
I would, I would agree with Member Heath. It's, it's just, um, it's not straightforward, especially if, if you did handouts at the planning board meeting as well, that you wouldn't then just, um, you know, I'm not sure if I'm speaking appropriately, but then kind of substantiate that information in the material that the zoning board was going to be looking at versus doing handouts again. Um, uh, and, um, so, and, and also the fact that what we're looking at doesn't necessarily represent what exists in, for this drawing. But let's take, uh, some more questions, if you have some questions, uh, members.
Uh, no questions, but thank you for presenting, and I appreciate also a little bit more information just to see both what's there and what's proposed at greater detail. Um, and I know that it's hard, especially if you don't have either design knowledge or it's your first time dealing with this, to try to get all that stuff together. Um, there must be a better word to say that, but if, um, it would be helpful to see a little bit more going forward. Um, just a question, and this is my own ignorance here, but the buffer, the three-foot buffer doesn't apply on the other side for the next property because that's their own driveway? Is that correct?
Uh, the history on the adjacent property appears to have been grandfathered as far as pavement to the lot line. Um, so prior to nineteen eighty-eight, the town did not require the four-foot landscape buffer, so driveways after nineteen eighty-eight, new driveways require the four-foot landscape buffer, and if, uh, a individual property has less than that, say, a two-foot landscape buffer, then they somewhat conform and they have to maintain that two-foot landscape buffer. They can't just eliminate it.
So it's because of the new building that then you need to maintain it?
Yes.
Um, but, thank you. No, I, I agree that more detail would be helpful, um, in order to see how to, how to mitigate that change because of the new building and new zoning that comes with it.
Great, thank you very much. Um, so I, when I was there, um, I noticed that there is actually a shed where, uh, Space Five is or part of Space Five is?
There is a shed in the backyard. Uh, I, I don't know if that occupies where Space Five would be shown on, uh, on the plan, though.
Yeah, I don't think it took up the full space, but I think it takes up part of the space. It seemed like it's, uh, I don't know how much depth you've got there, but, um, it, it seemed that it was deeper than, uh, what Space Five is shown, um, to extend to. So I, you know, I did notice the crushed stone for the full width of the property, um, even on the, the buffer strip between the sidewalk and, and the curb. Does anybody ever park on the right-hand side of the steps?
Does anyone?
Does anybody park over here on that side, to the right of the steps?
No.
No.
No? Okay. Um, and the, um, the fireplace that's cantilevered is in front of the bay, right? It's alongside space number two?
That's correct.
So for, I just also want to just understand, um, I don't know if the building is rental or condominium. I'm assuming that no spaces in the front yard in front of the house are deeded to anybody who owns property in the building?
It's not a condominium, so it's a two-family with an accessory apartment.
Okay. Um, and, and then for, so five spaces is the maximum for the property? Is that right?
Uh, five spaces the minimum for the property, two for each residential unit and the accessory unit, um, when they were approved and codified in the zoning ordinance required one space, so five is required to conform to the code at, currently and at the time under the conditions, uh, of the approval of the accessory unit.
And, and what has been approved then generally, uh, from your description of the, the front? Have, have basically six spaces been approved for the property?
No, five spaces. What was approved as part of the decision in nineteen ninety-three was four stacked spaces and then a space adjacent to, uh, what you see as parking space one.
Okay. And then for whatever the history of this was, then they said that they would not park in the front, although they are.
Yes, it, it creeped into the front yard further.
Yeah, and there would be five tandem spaces. Okay. Great. All right, so, does anybody have any opinion in terms of, uh, what they'd like to see for this? Should we, um, should we be, um, you know, one is to, um, deny the application, um, as it's been submitted. Uh, another option is to request the applicant to, to go back and actually provide, um, what they've described or handed out, um, as well as reacting to our comments so that we would more clearly understand how much landscaping they would be proposing for the property. That's what do people feel they would like to do? Or actually, don't have to, I mean, we could also vote to, to approve it, but it doesn't sound like it's going to be approved, um, this evening based on the information that we've received.
I personally would feel more comfortable continuing it and getting more information and reviewing that for, at our next meeting.
I would agree. I'm happy to give the applicant, the opportunity to come back in a month with new materials that are responsive to the comments the board has made tonight and see what that, where that takes us.
Could I make one more comment before we make a motion? It, it sounded to me like on the, this side, on the right side, not the side that we're discussing, your neighbor might be thinking about putting up a fence. So then you would just have concrete on that side and then a fence. There wouldn't be any possibility of parking there, is that right?
If I understand your question, you're talking about what's shown has Lot One Twenty?
Uh, next to the, next, the, the space where it says one hundred feet next to the cantilevered bay on the right side of the property.
Lot One Eighteen.
Oh, uh, that side is not where the driveway is. I, I really don't know-
So-
-if that's, if that's the neighbor who's complaining, um, or, or made a comment, um, and wants to see a fence there. I mean, obviously, we have no objection if somebody wants to put a fence on their side of a property line.
Well, just a thought is that if there's going to be a fence and then an area of concrete here without any use for parking or otherwise, that, if you're going to be submitting something to us showing some landscaping improvements-
Mm-hmm.
-that could maybe mitigate the landscaping that you're asking for relief, the requirement, uh, from, from this requirement, that's an area that, that might be used for landscaping.
Oh, I understand. So right now, I, I'm not familiar with that side of the property, so is that, uh, hardscaped? Or is that?
I, I believe it's concrete. Is that, that's, that was part of my question.
Oh, on this side, is that concrete?
No, it's, uh, no, it, there's bushes and trees.
Okay, okay.
There's shrubberies.
I misunderstood. I thought that, that there was paint there.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify that it was the neighbor on the left side-
Okay.
-who was going to put the fence up.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, but also just for, for added clarity, um, I would say, you know, approximately to the front of the house on the right-hand side, it is crushed stone as well. So bit, they, the whole front is crushed stone or, or bituminous. I guess another, you know, consideration, um, is with, basically the hardship seems to be the, the bays that are part of the house, the cantilevered bays. Uh, so the bay window and then what's not illustrated but should be illustrated is the, um, the, uh- So the bay window, and then what's not illustrated but should be illustrated is the chimney. But those would seem to impact spaces two and three, but not spaces one, four, and five. So I guess I wonder, is part of a scenario, the fact that there would be no buffer potentially, or less of a buffer, at spaces two and three only? But more landscaping at all of the other spaces, to allow for that potential, you know, hardship mitigation? And then, front yard landscaping versus the crushed stone? But I guess, the thing that you need to also be deciding is, I think with the shed, it doesn't look like there's space for five cars. So what really should be documented is what's there, you know, versus something that's a number of years old, and what your intent is. So is the intent to park two spaces wide on the front or, and four deep? Or is the intent to do what we're seeing here and not do any front yard parking? So I guess if, if you're going to come back, your drawings should be submitted in advance, and they should be clearly indicating your intent in terms of the extent of landscape area versus the extent of paved area?
And I take it the board would want to see both existing and proposed conditions on the plan?
I think that makes sense to do. And I think that, you know, special attention in terms of the landscaping aspect should be given to a designation of where you would anticipate crushed stone to remain, if anywhere.
Okay.
We really would want to understand to, to consider, you know, the appeal, where would you be putting landscaping? So, okay?
Okay, understood.
Great. So that is, would you like to make a?
I would make a motion that the board continue this application until its next meeting in November.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. All right. And so, as I mentioned, thank you very much, Member Donato. Have a nice rest of the night. Member Donato is accusing herself from this next application, which is for 101-103 Moore Street. I have noticed about half a dozen people come in after the second swearing-in, so are, if anybody's come in that hasn't been sworn in and you intend to speak, could you please stand up so I can swear you in? So please raise your right hand and repeat after me, "Aye," and then state your name.
I, aye.
Swear that the testimony that I give this evening
Is the testimony.
Is the truth, the whole truth?
The truth.
And nothing but the truth, so help me God. Great, thank you. All right, so, Member Heep, when you're set, you can read the hearing?
You bet. Mohabriskala, owner, La Court Affordable Trust LLC, 30 College Avenue, Somerville, Massachusetts, 02144. Request the zoning board of appeals grant a special permit finding in accordance with Watertown zoning ordinance, section 4.06A. Alterations to nonconforming uses to allow conversion, 37 units and associated site improvements located in the T2 family zoning district.
Great, thank you.
Good evening.
State your name and?
My name is Mohabriskala, and I represent La Court Affordable Trust LLC. Just to take a moment to recap where we've been in the last couple of months. On August 14th, we had a planning board meeting, and the planning board unanimously recommended us for approval for this project. Each of the planning board members specifically commented on the quality of the project, specifically pointing out that they appreciated the amount of time that was spent by me and my team in reviewing past applications by the past owner. The response we got from the planning board led us to believe that on August 28th, we should be expecting a very good response from the zoning board. And so we came to that meeting, waited a while, and we were expecting. Little did we know that Mr. Branglin and his wife were also expecting more than we were. And so as he put all his papers together and dashed out the door, I think it's appropriate for us to say, congratulations from my family to yours, congratulations from the La Court family to yours. And truly, we were tickled by the experience. I've been in a lot of zoning board meetings, I've never experienced that. So, La Court Affordable Trust is proposing the adaptive reuse of a commercial building at 101 to 103 Moore Street into the Dalby Mill residences. The Dalby Mill residences is named after its namesake, which is shown on this map. This is an 1879 map of Watertown. And what you see right here is a mansard building, and that's the building we are talking about. At least, that's one component that still exists, and there have been additions made to it. It is the only existing building that I can identify in this map. The instant application is for a special permit finding to allow a change of use pursuant to section 4.06 of the Watertown zoning ordinance, and is subject to section 5.07, the affordable housing requirements. As you know, the standard for a special permit finding for this change of use is that the board must simply find the change is not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use. I intend to clearly show you that the proposed change of use is significantly less detrimental according to every applicable zoning metric in the Watertown zoning ordinance. And it is for this very reason that the planning staff report recommends conditional approval of this proposal, and the planning board recommends conditional approval of this proposal, and all the contiguous abutters have also requested approval of this proposal. There is simply no objective metric that disagrees with the planning staff, planning board, and contiguous abutters. This proposal is simply less detrimental. Additionally, this proposal is consistent with the Watertown 2015 comprehensive plan. It will help to push Watertown closer to the 10% affordable housing requirement that subjects properties like this to 40B applications at the state level. Watertown is currently at 6.9%. And it will dust off and showcase a gem property that has been part of Watertown's historic fabric for 150 years, but has sat unrecognized for many decades. I believe you will find this application to be generous, thoughtful, and contributing to the values our society holds dear to, namely, historic education, historic preservation, increased housing, increased affordable housing, efficiency, and beautification. To give you some background on my company, La Court presently has a portfolio of over 100 buildings in the Boston area, and has extensive experience in adaptive reuse projects. We have immaculately restored historic buildings as old as 1898 to original form, and achieved Silver Lead certifications on various adaptive reuse projects. This panel showcases some of La Court's dedication in these various endeavors. These are a couple of interesting buildings, located in Somerville and in Cambridge. They're good examples of our commitment to beautification, functionality, durability, efficiency, and neighborhood dignity. Keep in mind that these are all rental buildings, and will never be sold by me. These properties are more than income producers, they are gems to me, to their, and to their respective neighborhoods. Each building's character is studied and brought to the surface for the benefit of all who experience the buildings. After all, and in the words of Winston Churchill, "First we shape our buildings, and afterwards they shape us." I'd like to take a moment to go through this panel. So the insides of these buildings are typical of our finishes, and what you can see is cherrywood cabinets, stainless steel appliances, granite tops, hardwood floors throughout. The outsides of the buildings that we take over, we immaculately restore. So looking at this building, this is the Ellis School that was built by the City of Cambridge in 1898. It was then acquired by the Archdiocese in the mid-sixties and turned into North Cambridge Catholic High School. And then I acquired it just as the students were leaving, and converted it into apartments. And in acquiring it, it had, it had many years of being underserved, and so we reappointed the entire building. We restored everything we could on the outside, we replaced the entire slate roof. We restored all the cornice, having to make and fabricate pieces to match. We also put in beautiful granite curbing and historic bollards, as you can see in this image. We did everything we could do to take this building back to its original great dignity and form. And you can see some of the work that was done in the cornice and in the corbels. I could say a lot about that building, but there are so many that we do this kind of work on. This is the Chadwick in Davis Square in Somerville. We were not required to do anything to this building, but we did. It had seven, about probably 60 or 70 years of being underserved, covered in ivy. And we reappointed it, restored it. We also put in some beautiful curbing, some beautiful landscaping, and you can see this from a bird's eye view. All of that curbing was actually designed by me on AutoCAD, not because, not because I had to do it, but because I wanted to do it. Forgive me, computer problems. Additionally, you'll see, as I get back to that screen, you'll see that the, we placed beautiful pavers around the building, and lovely landscaping. On the insides of the building, some of the most commonly underserved areas are hallways. And what we do is, we take over these buildings, and we have these stark hallways. What you're looking at is a school hallway, and you're seeing the paint difference is where the height of the lockers used to be. And so we can go in and make these boring stark hallways like you typically see in these buildings, or you can do what we want to do, which is, make them great, make them incredible. This is still a rental, but we take a lot of pride in what we're doing. You look at this hallway and you see columns, you see recessed panels, chair rails, cornice. Everything we can do to make these things special is important to us. But then we go to, we go even deeper into the infrastructure of the building. This is a blower door test, and for those who are lead aware, they understand that this kind of test is an efficiency test, and it makes sure that we are making high-efficiency spaces, as well as making spaces that are smell-conscious, so that if someone is having Japanese cuisine next to someone who's having Indian cuisine, they're not sharing the smells. So La Court now seeks to extend its experience in the adaptive reuse of the 1871 historic Dalby knitting mill structure, the oldest wood frame mill in Watertown. And that's shown here in this diagram outlined in red. The property is approximately a 31,000-square-foot lot with a 36,000-square-foot, four-story building on it. While it is technically in the T zoning district, meaning two-family, it is only flanked by seven houses. At least half of the lot is flanked by, and I'm going to blow this up and point this out, at least half of the lot is flanked by two parks, Boyd Park and Casey Park. Two commercial buildings, this large building and this building here are commercial. And one of the seven houses is owned by the Watertown Housing, is owned by Watertown Housing, which is located right here. So if I count out those houses, the houses that are homeowner houses, we have one, there's a second one underneath those trees, three, four, five, and then across the street, six, seven. I should point out that all of the contiguous abutters that are actually touching the property are supporting this project. Looking at the site photos, I have an aerial view in the middle, and then I have the points of view on those, on the, on the pictures on the sides. Looking at these site photos in relation to the lot, it is quite noteworthy that the parts of the property that are near to homeowners is actually only two and a half stories tall, and is in keeping with the two-family zone in terms of massing and windows. So if you're looking, if you're, if you're driving down or walking down Moore Street in this direction, you get to see this two-and-a-half-story structure. As you pass in front of it, this two-and-a-half-story structure. And then pass, as you pass into this area, you're starting to see the courtyard, which is basically facing itself, and you continue down, and you're seeing a mansard roof, and in zoning, typically mansards are considered a half-story, so this is basically a two-and-a-half story structure. So basically, the massing of the building is actually facing the parking lot, and the massing that is actually facing two-family structures is two-family-ish. So the, while the building is large overall, it is smaller in all the right places, and this helps the light pollution considerations in the adaptive reuse, because it is already in keeping with two-family lighting at night. Now to refresh, to refresh you on the applications this board has recently seen on this project. In 2017 and 2018, the prior owner of 101 to 103 Moore Street attempted to obtain approval for the adaptive reuse of the property from commercial use to residential use, first requesting 48 units, then 42 units, then 36 units. In 2018, the prior owner withdrew his special permit finding application and was forced to sell the property due to financial endurance limitations. While this is a new special permit application on this property, your board has already seen this project, and I want you to know that I have already extensively studied the prior applications, read numerous reports on the project, and watched many hours of zoning board video related to the prior owner's struggle through the special permit finding process that ended in application withdrawal. As such, I have already incorporated all of the input from the various staff members and board members into the current plan, and this is truly a vetted and complete plan. I have tabled these zoning board members' requests in section seven of the application statement, which I do believe you have, and I hope you have, I've tabled it all, and I've tabled it by member, because I watched the video many times, and I captured every bit I could. And I am pleased to say that I have incorporated every item requested into the current plan, including the comments of Member Santucci-Razi, who has recused herself, Member Donato, who has recused herself, and Member Cohen, who is now on the planning board, and who was very complimentary of how careful I studied the prior hearings and responded to each member's comments in the current plan. Member Cohen, as a prior zoning board member for hearings on this property in 2017 and 2018, recommends approval of this plan. In fact, all the planning board members separately commented on their appreciation for the careful incorporation of all prior requests into this plan. So while this is the first time I have personally come in front of this board to present this project, I feel as if I have presented this project three times, because I've already responded to three meetings worth of board member comments. I've wanted to be respectful of your time, I do not want to say, I don't want you to say the same thing again, and I believe that you will find all is in order to conclude that this change is not significantly more detrimental, but is in fact, less detrimental. The primary differences between the prior and current plans relate to the following areas: affordable housing. I was more generous in this plan. Historical character. The prior application had no plan to showcase the property's history. Quality of the project. The quality of our work is far superior to the prior plan. Community improvements. We are doing more for the community. New improvements, which are listed on pages three and four of the applicant's statement. Community impact mitigation solutions have been incorporated, and other responsive improvements to the ZBA members, we have responded to everything you've requested. I would like to say a few things about affordable housing and historical character before diving into the plans. On affordable housing, the Watertown zoning ordinance requirement is a 15% affordable housing for multifamily projects in this group type. In the last 2018 iteration of this project, the prior owner proposed 36 residential units, which rounded down to five affordable units. Today's proposal is for 37 residential units, which rounds up to six affordable units. To quote the Watertown Housing Partnership Chairman, Fred Reynolds, "I have never seen any applicant intentionally choose a unit count that rounds up the affordable units in their project. The Housing Partnership is very happy with the units we are getting." A comment on historical character. The 1879 view of Watertown mass map by Bailey &amp; Company shows both this historic mansard-roof mill building and the historic waterways next to it, Boyd and Cook's Pond. Just pulling up that map again. So it shows the mansard building, it shows Boyd Pond and Cook's Pond, and the waterway bridge that connects them. The ponds are gone today, and now are low-lying land depressions known as Boyd Park and Casey Park, formerly Cook's Pond Playground. Most of the buildings in this picture, as I've mentioned, are gone. The property, therefore, represents the oldest fabric in this neighborhood and one of the oldest in Watertown. Its rich, its rich, its rich history should be showcased in its adaptive reuse, and the goal here is to dust off this old mill building, tell its story, and the story of the waterways that are now playgrounds. To that end, the plan is to create three outdoor plaques, as shown on this slide, and numerous indoor displays, large displays, like six-foot-by-six-foot images. To capture the rich history of this property and the waterways that are now the rich history of this property and the waterways that are now represented by land depressions. The street-side plaques are shown on this sheet. We have three plaques here, and I won't read them out loud, but basically, the two-left plaques are going to be mounted to boulders that are, that are placed along Moore Street in the landscaped area, and the third plaque on the far right is going to be mounted to the building, because there is no landscaping there. The middle plaque speaks of the 1871 mill structure, the right one speaks of the 1885 structure, and the left one speaks of the bridge and waterways. Additionally, a prominent and unusual black steel railing, as shown as the, as shown in the upper-left of this panel, with arches reminiscent of an aqueduct, will replace the current aluminum black railing along Moore Street. Try that one more time. Can I do it? Did it? For the purpose of capturing the feeling of a waterway under the bridge, so these arches are meant to be aqueduct-like, and just try to create a feel. Additionally, the trees that will be planted in that landscaped area, when we get to the landscape plan, you'll see will be river birch-type trees to try to, again, capture that feeling as a person is reading those historic plaques. Continuing, though, looking at this panel, which is a materials board, we have also antique bollards throughout. We have a pergola on the top right, which actually was something that Member Ferris had suggested, and I will get to as it covers the, the trash area. And then various other materials board things, I think the most important of which is that we are going to be placing hardy plank lap siding to remove, to replace the vinyl siding that's currently existing, and instead of using dumpsters, which are noisy and disturbing, we're going to be using trash totes. The objective, if we look at this image, the objective is for someone to stand on these granite stones here, look over the aqueduct railing, onto the parking lot, and capture three historical concepts. A, the parking lot was underwater when it was Cook's Pond. B, the existing mansard building was present on the shore of that historical pond, and C, the lookout where the observer is standing was itself an aqueduct bridge at the time. Additionally, while the exterior of the property will be greatly improved, its structure and fenestrations will be minimally altered, so as to protect the historical utilitarian origins of the building for viewing by posterity. So as we get into the plans, please keep in mind that this is not just an apartment building. It is a historical experience. That will be a contribution to this neighborhood and to Watertown, offering historic charm and educational glimpses to the site's original industrial fabric. So let's get into the plans. So this is the proposed site plan, and I'm going to take this kind of clockwise. This is Moore Street. We have a courtyard here, there's a courtyard entrance. The courtyard entrance is meant to be limited to pedestrians. It's not meant to be allowing package drop-off, or Ubers, or anything like, or moving in. This was a request by the neighbors, and we are going to be putting, we will be implementing policies to protect that area, so people are not parking on Moore Street for that purpose, loading, unloading, et cetera. We have that bronze plaque location there. As we continue down Moore Street, we start to see the, the bronze boulder plaque, the bronze boulder plaque, the lookout, and we have multiple historical bollards, as you see, as you can see here. Those who are familiar with the site realize that there's a down ramp to get into the parking lot. That down ramp is currently eighteen feet wide, and while two cars can pass in eighteen feet, they cannot safely pass. So the plan is actually to widen that ramp to be twenty-two feet, so that it provides for safe passage. Additionally, as you look at this image, there is a public benefit of pedestrian passage. We plan to place a stair right here, so that pedestrians in the neighborhood can come down the sidewalk on Moore Street and cut through the property to get to Casey Park. They would come down these stairs, walk through the sidewalks, go down the ramp, and get to essentially the asphalt. Now, we could allow them to pass over the asphalt, just like we all pass through asphalt, through asphalt in the grocery stores, but we wanted to do better than that. We wanted to make it safer, we wanted to make even greater delineation, and so what we're going to do is embed granite curbing in the new asphalt, so that there is a passage, so people just know where they're walking. Again, they could reasonably and safely walk there, but let's just add a level of safety to it. That was our thinking. So this is pavable, it's all going to be, because it's, because it's embedded, but it just adds a certain level of safety. Now, as we look at the plan, continuing to look at the plan, you'll see that we have a sign placed at the entrance, and that sign says "Yellow Spaces for Public Use." What does that mean? Well, it means that I don't own all this property. I own everything up to this line, and then the city owns this area, which is the easement parking area. In the previous meetings, I heard you, and I've responded to you, and the question was, how do we get the public to know that they can use this for public use? And the answer is, this is our plan, which was actually kind of your plan, and I've adopted it. And the plan is, we're going to stripe all of these parking spaces white, we're going to stripe all of these parking spaces yellow, we're going to place yellow signs for all of these parking spaces, and we are going to dovetail that into a sign at the entrance that says "Yellow Spaces for Public Use." The exact language of this is going to be determined once we finalize the agreement with the city, which has, which is really close to being finalized, but I think they're kind of waiting for you guys to give the final stamp, so that we can kind of detail the word, the exact language on this. So as we continue to look at this proposed site plan, how much parking do we have? Well, on the area that, that I own, we have forty-car parking with one shadow space, which basically is forty-one car parking, but we don't feel we need more, we'd rather have the, have it, keep it as a shadow space. And then we have forty-one bike parking, twenty-three outdoor, and eighteen indoor. Let's look at some of that, some of those other, oh, so let's continue, actually, on the parking easement. On the parking easement, we have, currently, we have fifteen spaces. The proposed is to have fourteen spaces, because the city asked us to redevelop that space, redevelop the, the city's owned parking area, so that there is a handicap parking access, which then ate up one space, but the city felt that that was valuable, and we're, we're here to, we're here to fulfill what the city would like. There's also bike parking, so that people who are not looking to walk or, or drive can certainly use this public area for bikes. And, and it is our intention to even go past that area and create what is, in the area that currently is a mud path, and actually create a nice walking path, with landscaping all around it, and lighting, and antique bollards to illuminate that area, to, just as a, as a public benefit, as an amenity for the neighbors. You'll see here, we also have two handicap parking spaces, and we have a one-in-twenty ramp, for those who know what that means. The trash is located here, and above that trash, as well as above this bike area, is going to be a pergola, or trellis, to cover that trash, so that occupants, residents in the, in the units overlooking that will not be looking at that. And when we get to the landscaping plan, you'll see it's not just a trellis, it's actually ivy-covered as well. I think I've largely covered this concept in the last slide. While I do have a black and white landscaping plan, I prefer to look at this plan. Those who know me know how much I care about landscaping, and how much I care about the quality of the colors. This is a large view. Let's look at some specific areas. The courtyard is going to be covered in red pavers. Around those red pavers are going to be granite curbing, and we have the entrance there. In the middle of the courtyard is going to be a beautiful bed with an emperor red Japanese maple, that when you're standing in the street, or driving by, or walking by, and you look in there, you should be able to see beautiful colors. It should pop out at you, and not just be passive, it should interact, be interactive. We have yellows, we have other greens, we have different, different kinds of greens. In fact, underneath this emperor red maple is going to be pachysandra, which is a year-round We have stairs, and we have a handicapped accessible ramp. As you continue down the sidewalk, you get to what I described earlier as those river birches, weeping white birches that are reminiscent of a river, and as you start to see behind it, you start to see the, the boulders and plaques, you start to see the bold aqueduct railing, and you still continue to see great colors. You don't see the trash, because the trash is covered. You don't even see the bikes, because they're covered as well. We want as much green looking into this as possible. And again, we're trying to get depth and, and color out of all of this. I've talked to you a little bit about the pad here, I've talked to you about some, about some, some historical bollards. On the west line of the lot is currently a dilapidated stockade fence. This plan is going to change slightly, because the request of the neighbor over here, Chris Higgins, has been that I move that fence in two feet, into my property line, okay? It's actually on his property line, and it's been there for a long time. But we've decided to trade a little bit, because what he has is, he has, he, the stockade fence actually slightly on my property, and in this area, and slightly on his property in this area, and so we've figured out what the square footages need to be, so that we're both even. We're going to move in here, we're going to place our brevity all the way down, and we've got it, we've got a happy neighborly relationship that doesn't affect the parking and does give us good greenery and screening around the property. I've already talked about that, I've already talked about most of this. I suppose I could just point out, again, just that this path is going to be delineated for the benefit of the public pedestrians. I put one slide of existing conditions plans. This is Level Zero floor plans, and I put it in here just as a reminder for everyone to understand that when we're looking at a floor plan on an adaptive reuse project, we have to get out of the mindset of, what does a unit look like in general? What you're seeing in this plan is a column, a column, a column, a column, a column, you've got square columns, you've got round columns, you've got two columns next to each other, you've got all sorts of structural elements, you've got I-beam columns, you've got all sorts of columns here, and you have to work within this, and that's adaptive reuse. I think you'll find that all of our floor plans are really thoughtful and well-designed, and for those that are a little squirrely, there's reason, and it's these kinds of structures. So let's move into the proposed plans. Level zero is basically the parking lot level. It has four units in it. On this level, there's an accessible unit and an affordable unit. On the topic of accessible units, the Architectural Access Board would require this building to have two accessible units. We have actually produced four accessible units, and the reason we've produced four accessible units is to be responsive to the affordable housing needs, because those who understand how affordable housing works in Watertown, the ordinance is built so that the units can move, whereas in other cities, the units don't move. A unit assigned is deeded forever. In Watertown, that doesn't work that way. The units can move, so the units that are currently affordable are not necessarily affordable ten years from now. And affordable housing often needs more accessibility options, and so they asked us, they said, "We appreciate you have two, but could you give us four?" And the answer was, yes, we can. And so, we have four accessible units, and so, in the case that the affordable housing needs to move their units based on their need, we can accommodate them. But again, looking at this level, these four units, three of them are duplexed, one of them is not. The one that is not is accessible, and it makes sense for it to be accessible, because it's next to a handicap parking and a one-in-twenty ramp, and you can get into that unit, and it's got an accessible bathroom, and that unit can get very easily to all of the zero-level amenities, including the storage locker, the laundry, the exercise room, the elevator, if they want to go up to the courtyard and enjoy just sitting and reading in the courtyard. You'll notice also on this level that we have a housekeeper's quarters, and if we look at the main entrance, which is, this is the main entrance, and it's important, this is an important part of the, of the plan, is that we have a package area here, and the housekeeper's quarters is meant to have someone present all day that's managing package deliveries, so that people are not dropping packages off on the other entrance, which would annoy neighbors. We're going to be working with the delivery people to make sure that they are doing what is expected of them, to get these packages down to this area. Additionally, we have signage here, moving drop-off rules, and that's also going to be inside the tenant packets. So there's always a bit of training that comes with that. Also included in tenant packets, packets, we'll be giving, for each new tenant, we'll be giving a fifty-dollar Charlie card, not because we're required to, but because we feel it will help people to get used to the public transportation options in this area. On this large wall, we have great options for historic displays. Now, why are we putting up historic displays? Well, I guess, to begin with, I just enjoy historic things. But it's not just about that. One of the questions that, that Chairman Santucci-Razi asked at one of the, one of the last meetings, she said, "Why would people want to live here over some other place?" I have an answer for that. It's special. I mean it. If you're walking into this place, and you're understanding the depth of what this place is, even though it's modern, and it's, it's efficient, but it's cool, that has value Moving to the, the Level One. Level One has twelve units in it. We should talk a little bit more about Level One than perhaps some of the other levels, the upper levels, because it also has an entrance, and it's important to understand how people will interact with this entrance. So we have the courtyard, we've talked about the ability to be, to use the seating up there for reading, or whatever one might do. When you walk in, you'll find that there are thermal break doors, so that this effectively becomes a foyer. And you have seating here, and in that foyer, you have, again, the moving and drop-off rules, and what else do you have? You have historic displays, just to make the entrance cool. And it's not just for the residents, it's also for their, for their, for their visitors. Coming into a place like this and seeing this is enjoyable for visitors and for residents to know that their visitors are enjoying it. I think the floor plans largely speak for themselves. What I would like to point out is that this plan is a revision from your plan, slightly, one month ago, 9/23/2019. We made a revision where we removed two windows on the property line and replaced them with two skylights. You'll see this, this revision on multiple images going forward. And again, we have another accessible unit on this floor. I'm not going to talk too much about the upper levels, because I really do think that they are rather self-explanatory, other than to point out that this unit, 203, is both affordable and accessible. Unit 208 is affordable, and there are nine units on that floor. Unit three is rather similar. We have an affordable unit, we have an affordable unit. This affordable unit, 311, is actually a duplexed unit, which goes to the, the small fourth floor, and the small fourth floor is right here, again, duplexing into the affordable unit. And we have a small elevation here that kind of shows how that, how that space looks, and you'll see that the dormer is, is all pre-existing. We're not doing any construction build-outs on this building. As we look at the roof plan, you'll start to see that we have a number of skylights in that fourth-floor roof. For those of you who remember, these skylights are far smaller than the skylights that were previously proposed. The skylights that were previously proposed, I feel, had nothing to do with the history of this building, and actually just made the building look like something it was not. And if you actually read the historic, the comments from the Historic Commission, they would say to you that this building is actually, its long, rather boring roof is actually historically special, because it's kind of long and boring, and entirely utilitarian, and not really meant for any purpose other than a mill. These black spots are HVACs. I have, I have fifty condenser units on that roof. Surrounding it, we have forty-eight, forty-eight-inch acoustical screen. Those HVAC units and the screen, and the height on the building, is expected to produce less than a forty decibel sound at any property line. And again, you see that, that modification of a month ago of those two skylights on the low roof. On the mansard, there is one new skylight that was required, and you wouldn't see it from the ground anyways, so it doesn't affect the historic character of the, of the property. As we look at the elevations, you can again see the skylights. We'll be changing all the windows, as shown in the materials board, to a Fibrex window, which is basically a fiber-infused composite. It'll be surrounded by synthetic wood trim and fiber- It'll be surrounded by synthetic wood trim, and fiber, uh, cement clapboard, as I've described earlier. There are a few windows moved, a few windows removed, and a few windows added, but by and large, the character of the building is unchanged. Looking at the north and east elevations, this is where we removed two windows and added back two skylights, and it's kind of more of the same, I think it's relatively self-explanatory here. This is a three-dimensional understanding of the, of the, of the structure, and how it relates to its lot lines. You can see largely, the only thing that's happening here, in terms of outdoor change, from a construction standpoint, is that the HVAC is going on top of the building. And then just looking at that same thing from a different angle. For those who do not know, uh, there's an activity and use limitation on the property, where the, the neighboring property, which is currently a preschool, had a spill prior to when it was a preschool. That spill has leached over slightly into the property in this area, and the property has been u- my property has been used, fine, as a commercial property, but in terms of turning it into a, either a residential property, or a grade school, I would have to do what the preschool did, which is, they had to put in a ventilation system. They have a functioning ventilation system, and their problem is far greater than ours. We'll, we'll need to put a small ventilation system in this area, and that'll take care of any activity and use limitation on the property. Amazingly, this old property has an extremely robust stormwater drainage system. The only thing that I thought was missing, is the only thing I'm placing in it, which is, I want to be able to irrigate my beautiful landscape, with water that we capture on the property. And so I'm installing, in the very robust system, I'm installing a 3,000-gallon retention cistern, for the purpose of watering the plants. And that largely concludes what I feel like, I'd like to present at this point. While I have many more slides that are supporting slides, I think, unless you ask me questions on a particular topic, I would rather give more opportunity for other people to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, that was a very thorough presentation, I appreciate it. Thank you. I, I think, um, what do we want to do? Do we want to ask questions first, or have the public?
I defer to others, but I'd go public first.
Okay. So if there are any members of the public who would like to make some comments, and support, or opposition, you're welcome to do so right now.
To a question about the extension.
If you're, if you're going to speak, if you'd come up to the microphone, please, and identify yourself, thank you.
Hi, I'm Annette Farrell from Union Street, 59 Union Street. I read on the Watertown website, that there was a Capital Street extension mentioned, some sort of easement onto Capital Street extension. Does anybody know one of the letters in the?
The Capital Street extension is a existing paper street.
Yep.
And there, there was a cross-access easement to use the parking that's in the Capital Street extension, and that would need to be renewed. Is that the question?
Is that part of the Moore Street?
It's the area at the back of the lot, there's 15 parking spaces, that the previous use had, it was public, it's public parking at the rear of the lot.
Is that what he was, the parking spaces that are going to be allotted for public use?
Right, and that's on, that's on public land.
How do we know that it's going to be continued as public use? Or is there going to be stickers, so we can see that, that these people that live there aren't using the public space?
It's, um, it's publicly owned land, so there's, there's no way that it could not be used for public, but from the striping program, we're going to be creating a, um, an easement, an agreement with the town, with the town council, so that-
You can't drive down Capital Street and get into the back of his parking lot.
No.
But how do you know that the public is using it, and not the people that live there?
They have a, uh, may I?
Oh, please.
They have a, a parking management plan, and the staff planning board report also has a condition for requirement, to do parking management, so that their residents can't use that parking for that period of time.
So they'll police their own parking lot.
So it'd be, it'd be for visitor parking.
They'll police their own parking lot, to see that the people that live there aren't using the public space?
Well, there would be a combination of them maintaining and ensuring that their residents don't have additional vehicles, and then they have a monitoring program with the town, so the town would be checking it on a annual basis.
The town will check it on an annual basis, to see that the people living there aren't going to be using the public space?
There's a lot of details in the, in the back and forth, so I can't get into all the specifics of how that, um, it's, it's like any municipal parking spaces, there would be a management program that's been submitted, and there's review, so.
Okay.
And if there's any complaints, or any indication that they're not meeting their obligation, the conditions in that plan, we have an enforcement, uh, staff in the department that would then go and actively enforce on the property, to ensure that that's not occurring.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Just, may I, if you'd come up, please? All right, so if you'd just state your name, and-
Doris Webb. I, I live on, um, the parallel street, uh, which is Boyd Street.
Okay.
I would, I live directly behind this, this, um, uh, proposed place, and, um, I have lived in the house right, in the two-family, right across the street from it on Moore Street as well, in the past. And I've lived here for, I've lived in my current house about 20 years, and I can't remember whether it was three years in the other house, but something like that.
Okay.
I have some questions. One is, I have a lot of doubts about the, I think it's very nice, I think it's really a thoughtful, historic thing to put in the, the fence, um, that's over supposedly the old, um, the old river, uh, that was, I guess, a holding area behind, uh, for the factory that was there. But, uh, right now, it's a road. It's a road without any edges, it's not a, a, um, uh, developed road, um, as I recall. And, um, so, that is kind of meaningless to people who live in the area, and, and, um, the other, the other thing I wondered is, how many people would actually be living here? I mean, you have 37 places, how many people do you figure? Is there any answer?
Would you like to come in up and answer that, kind of, and, and please come to the microphone?
So my expectation, and I actually have a graph that I could show, perhaps, when we go and get into the questioning part, but my estimation is probably about 65 to 70.
How many?
65 to 70.
Out of 37 places, there are all going to be two, two people living in each one?
Yeah, and I can show that graphically, yes.
It's, you know, it's, it's hard to, like, perfectly predict it, and it's going to keep changing over time, because they're, they're rental apartments. So you might have a couple living in an apartment at one point, and at the next point, it might be a single person.
Could it be five people?
Well, hopefully not.
No.
And that's actually one, and I'd love to actually address that.
Please, go ahead.
Can I do that? Funny, I was not actually planning on, um, presenting this part at this time, but...
While the applicant is setting that up, I could also just clarify, there are housing code requirements, um, under state housing code, that limit the number of people that can be in one unit, based on bedroom sizes and unit sizes, so-
So you have to, if you have 37 units?
Well, it's, it's based on the unit size. I don't have the calculation in front of my unit size, and, and tell you specifically. Um, but there are housing code requirements that are under state, that would limit the number of occupants in each unit, based on that size.
And when, when you're speaking, if you'd please go to the microphone, just so that we all get to hear you?
Go ahead.
No, no, when you're, when you're speaking, yeah.
My, my concern is, this is two-family road, it's, I know it's beautifully done, but I'm concerned, I personally, uh, in order to go to the store, use this road all the time. Uh, or to go over to Watertown Street to do any shopping at all. Um, and, um, and if you go the other way to, um, Galen Street, um, it's already pretty crowded.
Right.
And I'm concerned about the traffic, and, and the number of cars, and, and that's, that's my concern.
Great, thank you. So if, if you'd address, you know, in, in some way, what you anticipate for occupancy, but obviously that, that is flexible, but also, uh, address the traffic scenario as well, I think that would be good.
Sure, sure. I produced this actually, um, to demystify some concepts. So as I told you, I own 100 buildings in this area, okay? And, and we know the real metrics versus myths. I think I'd like to begin by saying, the word density is a strange word, because it does not speak to detriment. The standard in an approval or denial of this application is, is it significantly more detrimental? Not as even, even is it more detrimental, is it significantly more detrimental? The word detriment is not answered by the word density. Density has nothing to do with detriment. Density may be beneficial, to give you perspective. We landed on the moon in 1969. Since we landed on the moon 50 years ago, the population is, of the world has doubled. Is density, is housing density a problem, or is it a solution? Actually, it's a solution. But more importantly, it doesn't matter if it's a, it's a problem or a solution, it's actually a question of what's the impact? Because that's where the detriment word comes in. What's the impact of that density? Is the, is the impact positive, is the impact negative? To answer the question of impact, we actually have to look at the zoning ordinance, and say, what does the zoning ordinance say is the impact? What does it say is more detrimental? And when you find that our application is more conforming than the existing structure, then you cannot confirm, you cannot conclude that we are producing a more detrimental project, in fact, according to every metric in the zoning. We are less detrimental. We don't even have to be less detrimental. We can be more detrimental. We just can't be significantly more detrimental, but we're less detrimental. Now, this diagram is, is meant to demystify how density and unit count relate. The teal color is the number of units, the pink color is the number of adults. There's this concept, and it's a misconception, that the more units that you have, the more people you have. That's totally false. This lovely lady asked a question, are people, are you going to have five people in a unit? Yes, if I have a five-bed. But I don't want a five-bed. Maybe even if I have a four-bed, but I don't want a four-bed. What I want is the least impactful number of units. If you look at this, at this, uh, graph, which is actually taking its data from this chart, this chart is unit count comparison by bed type. This building is, well, for this graphical number, it shows 33,000 square feet, it's actually closer to 36,000 square feet, but because there's common area, we've reduced the number of square feet in this calculation. If we made all of these units studios, using the DHCD unit size minimums of this, of Watertown, the, they would say each sto- its studio is kosher if it's 250 square feet. Okay. Well, if I take 33,000 square, 33,000 square feet, I divide it across 250, I end up with 132 units. Well, 132 units is going to have how many adults in it? Well, 165. If we go to the other side of that, of that table, and we say, let's say we go to the lowest unit count, we make it 21 units, but they're all five-beds, do the math, you've got 106 adults in there. So what we've just shown is that they are not, they don't follow each other. The unit count, in an adaptive reuse project, where you have a certain amount of area that you have to use, as the unit count decreases, it's a hyperbolic curve, and as the, as the, as the density increases, it's a parabolic curve.
So you're counting, pardon me for interrupting, you're counting adults, you're not counting children?
Yes, because in terms of resources, and in terms of impact, density is not what matters. What matters-
I'm just to clarify, yeah.
Yes, no, thank you, no, thank you for that. And you always, I've always found you ask really great questions, but might, but truly, it would be wrong to count children, because children don't drive cars. And when we're talking about traffic, and we're talking about parking, these are the metrics that we count in terms of impact. What's the parking impact? What's the traffic impact? Kids aren't doing this. So-
So it's good to clarify that.
Yes, right. So, so the point is that if you, so this arrow here is showing that two beds actually give you the lowest number of adults per unit. So if we go to this table, on average, a two-bed is going to have 1.75 adults in it. You understand what that means, it's not 3/4 of a person, it's just, some uni- some units are going to have two people in it, and some people are going to have one unit, and, and the person wants a study or a den, to maybe study in, or the office space. But on average, we see 1.75 units. You know what five-beds have? Five people, easily, and it's, you're going to have five adults in there. You're not really going to have families living in an apartment building, with five units in it. So it's really important that when we're looking at unit counts, that we're, we're not losing sight of how that does affect density. But I want to go one step further on the density conversation, and, and I don't, I didn't mean to talk about this now, but since we're, since it's really the right time to talk about it. The question is, where do we put density, in our society? Where do we put it? We need to put it somewhere. I just told you that 50 years, we double the population of the world. What's it going to be in 50 years? Another double? So we've got to put the density somewhere. Think about this area. You've got an existing building. If we look back at that map, of what that building actually is, where it actually is, that building has Watertown Center, it has a park, a park, river, plenty of, of transportation accessibility, it's got a grocery store over here, it's got restaurants all in here. Here's the question, if you're not going to put the density here, where are you going to put it? If not here, where? This is the, a great spot for it. Now, look at, now, this is a two-family zone, right? But look at this zone for a moment. This is kind of the two-family zone, right? And this is kind of the outskirts of it. And where I said earlier, the building is facing two-family, it looks two-family. And where the building is not facing two-family, and it's facing parks and, and commercial buildings, it's a little bigger. But the reality is, this is a great place, where density is not an impactful detriment, it's actually a solution.
Well, so, uh, to, to answer the question, um, what, what would you say the range of occupants might be?
I'd say 65 to 70. That's, yes. Because we have 22 two-beds, and then 10 one-beds, a couple of studios, and a couple of three-beds.
Just to confirm, just based on like our census data, that actually confirms, if you just ran a straight number, 70 would be the average, 2, 2.1 on average across the whole town. And these units are smaller than the average, so it, it would be less than that, based on just Watertown's statistics.
And for our statistics, um, Gideon, is that, is it adults we're talking about, or people?
No, that's people.
Yeah, and what you're saying is adults?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the public? Otherwise, we're going to-
No, no, it's funny, you said you-
Sir, if you're, if you're going to speak, if you'd please come to the microphone.
I said it's poor office.
Uh, no, 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 if, if you want to speak in-
I think there's some neighbors in here.
Well, sir, actually, you've got a great opportunity now to head up to the microphone, and let us know your name, and, and give us your comments.
I think people know my name.
I don't.
You will after I get through this.
Okay. What is your name?
My name is James Brown.
Okay.
Okay. I lived at 83 Moore Street for 68 years.
Great.
And according to this man, he's building the Golden Castle, on the south side of Watertown, all right? For 30 years or so, people like myself, and Marion Roberts, and others, have tried to keep the south side of Watertown not to look like something like Alston, okay? Truly has a beautiful property, as you've said, how many times you've heard "special", "historic", it almost puts you to sleep, how much wonderful things he's doing for us, okay? But in reality, okay, the south side of Watertown, especially for the alternate members, thank you to be here, and congratulations on your baby, because I have a three and a one-year-old that live right on Moore Street. So it's a, it's a wonderful thing, as he pointed out earlier. We are actually 19th Streets, with two terraces. And in order to visit the south side, so for them to know, you have to cross a bridge. If you have not crossed the bridge, you are not in the south side of Watertown. Plain and simple, okay? All right? It's a very congested area, extremely congested area. It's a cut-through street, Moore Street is the only street that cuts through the entire south side. There's no other street that cuts- There's no other street that cuts through the south side of Watertown except Moore Street. You notice he's explained to you everything he has and he's avoided the traffic situations, okay? All right? And we're not beating him anyway or not about new construction. We've just welcomed three new houses within a hundred yards of his, built to perfection to conform to the neighborhood. There's an artistic residence house directly across the street from my house, very well into the neighborhood, very well accepted into the neighborhood. In fact, I was a little scared, one of them walked off the street yesterday and almost got hit by a car, all right? So basically, you know, he can say as much as he wants about the property, the neighborhood is more concerned about safety, okay, and traffic, all right? We have a small street that's listed eighty yards from here, it's called Therapak. And last March, okay, for three days only, because the police came up, they have ten children under the age of fourteen. The families decided they were gonna put cones up to block the street from being used because the traffic is so bad. After three days, the police came and told them that they weren't allowed to do that and they would have to take the cones down, okay? The traffic evaluation, I didn't make the planning board, but I, I obviously think you had some sort of traffic evaluation. Well, I saw the traffic evaluation and I know the officer and I wouldn't want to mention his name, because again, I've been there sixty-eight years in the same house. My property is eighty-five feet from his property. And all the abudders that he's talking about that all agree to him aren't on Moore Street, except for one, the one that he's traded property with, okay? So the other abudders are on Union Street. So they're basically not so much affected by the traffic. Well, it's safety for that matter, all right? My next question, she was wondering about the thing, we have winter spots down there, okay? And if those aren't protected for winter parking, someone's gonna have to walk a quarter of a mile through Casey Playground, which he mentioned was another playground before that, it was actually Parker Park, okay? Then it turned into Casey Playground.
But there, sir, there are, there are-
Yeah, I know you, he said he's got them designated, but again-
Well, no, I mean, it's-
There's the police in their own area.
It's town land, so, and it's town parking spaces, and so-
Just, just to be clear, if, if they are, if, if the easement is not worked out with the town council, not the zoning board, then they can't use our parking and we can't use it either. It's, it will become what it used to be, which was a paper street. It's, they do not have a legal right to it and we do not have a legal right to get to it. It is a landlocked-
The idea that if we aren't access to that, we're privy to it.
So I just, I didn't want to, that's not a, the town council's the one that has to-
Mr. Menner explained that the enforcement will go down annually, which seems to be once a year to me annually. These spots were used for winter parking. And after that, they're gonna have to go through a quarter-mile to Kate, the end of Casey Playground to access their vehicles, which you're talking to someone sixty years old walking through six inches of snow, quarter-mile through the park, which is the most direct way from the Capitol Street extension, which you mentioned, okay? And it just seems if they aren't policed or aren't taken care of, these people are gonna be out of luck.
I think, you know, as Mr. Menner mentioned, there's the, the opportunity at any time, it's not just once a year that if, if-
Well, he said annual, so I just presume.
But, but for you to, if you feel, let's say you use the, the property every day and you notice that people are parking in the public spaces and walking into the building-
No, I, I, no, I know Mr. Menner and he's, I've had issues with him before and he's very good, very well, he's corrected anything in that street.
So, so it's, there's a number of public spaces and if you feel that they're not being used appropriately, you could, you could have investigated-
I understand that totally. My understanding when I first got up there that he wanted a variance to take these spaces. It's not till I saw the presentation that I learned that they're gonna be marked for public use.
Yeah.
All right, again, we're talking about a man that's, you know, he has issues in other properties, we all know that, and he's being sued in other properties. And the character of the neighborhood is what we're concerned about.
Sorry, one second. Is that actually accurate? Are you being sued?
Oh, well, that- We know it's true.
I'm just wondering-
I'm sure that it's all-
I had a neighbor on my porch today, okay? She, she couldn't make it because she's an older woman. We counted from five-thirty to six o'clock tonight, a hundred cars past my house-
Okay.
-in one-half hour.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I think there's gonna be another gentleman speaking on the traffic situation further on this point. But I don't wanna repeat myself, but again, the abudders that are supporting this are basically not on Moore Street.
Okay.
All right? They're not affected so much by the traffic.
Okay.
The question I have too is, you know, he said he increased the sightline coming out of the property from eighteen to twenty-two feet. Before that sightline, there's a very sharp turn, okay? So the sightline coming out of the property is more than dangerous. It's more than dangerous. It's, it's not a problem of if an accident's gonna happen, it's gonna be when it's gonna happen, all right? And he also failed to mention that the park that he talks about, Boyd Park, is basically half in Watertown and half in Newton. And it's controlled and run by the city of Newton. So every Sunday, they have, in other, April to maybe September, they have girls' softball teams to play down there, twelve and under. So they park all the way down, it says no parking, but again, the park is basically uncleaned and taken care of by the city of Newton, okay? Which is gonna make that sight level even worse on probably five to seven months out of the year. So again, I mean, he's had a wonderful presentation and we're not looking to get rid of him. We just wish he'd maybe downscale it as he could. We think thirty-seven units is a little strong, that's seventy extra cars at least, she's saying you have a spot and a half for each car. It seems just a bit overwhelming, you know? And, and not to get on the, the bad side of this, but the former property that was there was a massage institute. And they used a hibernian parking lot for their parking. So they installed a crosswalk on Route sixteen, which is a state, it's a state road. So we only have so much control over it, okay? And he mentioned putting out some, some, some sort of a rock card where these people can use the bus line or something to that effect. Two people were killed in that crosswalk, okay? Maybe a year and a half, two years ago. Since the, the institute has been out of the, been dormant, there's, there's been no accidents at that crosswalk. But now you're gonna quadruple the people that are gonna be using, okay? Again, I'm not saying it's gonna be an accident, it's just, again, it's not a matter of if, it's when, okay? And we're just concerned about the safety and the traffic in the neighborhood. It's a very small congested area. To dump a thirty-seven-unit building on a side street on a small section in the town, it just seems a little bit overwhelming to us. And we'd just like you to consider the safety factor of the traffic. Again, with the artistic, he mentioned that it's a Watertown house, just one of his abudders. It's actually a halfway house. You can call it owned by Watertown Housing, you can call it anything you want, but it's a halfway house. And there's people there that are maybe in danger, and the artistic residents are definitely in danger. So we would like to see him either do something with the sightline coming out of that area, I know he's expanded it, but I sit there at my, my porch almost every night and I see these cars go by. And they come by at fifty miles an hour sometimes. We've raised the option of putting raised bumps. We've talked to the police, the police says the stretch isn't long enough to put radar. When you have that many cars going over raised bumps, you still have your problems. And I always say, well, don't worry because it's only the dormant, what I call factory. Because when I was a boy, it was a factory, all right? And I wouldn't worry. But now when those cars go by, I know someone's coming out of that driveway and something's gonna happen. So I, you know, I'm not saying that he has a bad plan, I'm just saying I wish he could do something with the sight and consider more of the traffic. And as this other lady mentioned, you're adding sixty, seventy people, you're talking for fifty, sixty more cars on the street, it's overwhelmed already. So, I mean, if he could just, I know he's got a great plan and everybody thinks he's building a wonderful castle and it's historic and it's very special, I mean, he almost lulled us to sleep with all this rhetoric, okay? So I would just like to see him approach that sight coming out of the, the property a, a little better if he could.
Right.
And again, the number of units seems to be a little high. I know he took it down from the others and I know he thinks he's doing the right thing, but in a, in a small congested area as, as we live, it still could be a little overwhelming.
Okay.
So at this time, if you have any questions to myself, anybody, by all means ask. Again, I've been there sixty-eight years, I can tell you from day one what it was, what it turned out to be, what it has been, and hopefully, again, that no one will be next year sitting here going, we knew this was gonna happen, okay?
Great, thank you very much. So we'll, we'll take some more comments if other people wanna comment and then we'll ask some questions of the applicant after that. Any other comments?
My name is Joan Vaschan. I live at ninety-three, ninety-five Union Street. I also share ownership with my daughter and her husband of one-hundred Capitol Street Extension, which is the top part at Union Street, not involved in his plans, so just to clear that up. The, first I'd like to say to my neighbors from Moore Street, I'm sorry you think that the traffic doesn't impact the rest of the neighborhood, but there are four streets to get through, including Union, and everybody goes through either from Moore Street or two Moore Streets. So our streets are just as impacted with traffic. And our feeling is that thirty-odd cars are knocking, are dropping the bucket to what the traffic situation is there now. So the traffic from his development will not have that much of an impact. But I would also like to say that I'm not sure what the neighbors want there, and it's hard for those of us who are in support of a project like this to figure out, because the building is empty, the building is a hazard when it's empty, like any empty buildings are. It's not lit there at the moment, there's people who hang around there, there's people who cut through there, we don't know what's down there, a lot of times it's dark. We're happy to see it develop to something nice. We're glad that somebody is not changing the footprint of what is there because judging from what goes on in Watertown with building, there are a lot of things that could happen there that would be a lot different than this. We're glad that somebody is keeping the historical integrity of the place. I've been there forty-six years, there have been a lot of things in there that have been noisy and trafficky and a pain in the butt to the neighbors. But our feeling is, since we directly abut the property, that people living is a little different than people business-ing and all kinds of traffic and trucks and painting trucks and things that have been there over the years. That's about all, but I would, I'd like to say something about the spaces that, that are down below there, which we can see from our house, that in all the years that it's been public information that people can use those for overnight parking in a storm, I don't remember ever seeing a car parked down there. So either it has not been publicized or people aren't willing to go down into that spot and maybe when it's nicer, people in our crowded neighborhood where the houses don't have enough parking will be able to take advantage of that. So it would be a good thing in a lot of ways, so.
Thank you very much. I'm just gonna ask Steph just a couple of questions that related to the, the comments. So for, just for, for clarity, the spaces, I assume that are part of the, the public property would be available for wintertime parking?
We are finalizing the easement agreement, but the expectation is that the only, that it would actually be not just for wintertime parking. So before it was a business and the residents in the neighborhood. Now it's residents and residents. So these residents are going to have a parking management plan until only visitors could use those extra spaces. So they're, they're providing access across their property to allow public parking for the park, not just during the winter. And then, so basically it's a year-round agreement. So it's a, it's a much better situation for the town and it would provide some spillover parking for that park, which has something like six or eight spaces all the way on the other side.
It would allow some overnight parking?
Yeah, it would be overnight parking would be allowed.
Okay, thanks. And the second question I had, just for clarity for, for, for me and everybody else sitting here is, if, if we could hear for this building, what types of uses as of right are, are able to be on the site, in which case none of us would be here tonight? So what, what types of uses as of right can happen in the building right now?
That's a slippery slope to go down in, in this situation and with the history of the site. So there's components of it that are by right with a mix of, you know, pieces on the bottom because it had been actively, and now it's currently being advertised. And then there's the section that had been reviewed by the board as a, a, a special permit finding, and that has the definition of a, of a, it's actually a commercial school, not a, not a, not a normal school. So, so the easiest, most clear use that could go in there by right would be a school of any sort.
Yep, okay.
But the whole, because that's a by right in a T-zone anywhere. And it's a large site with a lot of square footage.
So I guess I, I just wanna offer to people-
But there's certainly other uses too.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanna offer to people when we're thinking about the impact of traffic, that you think about other uses that might be able to happen in the building where we wouldn't be here reviewing it, could have really much different traffic scenarios and, and frequency. So sir, you wanna say something, go right ahead.
Yeah, well, Mrs. Vaschan, I've known her a long time, and she said there'd be thirty odd cars. We're talking seventy, seventy-five cars, and never mind visitors, okay? And as much as you can keep this delivery project that he thinks he has going, it's fine. But it's, it's, it's gonna be a lot more than thirty-five cars.
We're gonna ask the applicant to address-
And again, Moore Street is the only direct cut-through, okay? Union Street is in and out, so if you're familiar with the area.
Yeah, thank you.
It's the only direct route. And these people use this route four or five times as much as Capitol or Union. It's, it's way beyond-
Okay, great.
Way beyond thirty cars.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from people?
Good evening.
Hi there.
Hi, my name is Victoria Landers and I'm a resident of Watertown for seventeen years. We have four kids and we're really pleased to be here to support Mr. Rascal's project and the reuse. And I, I just want to address the concerns of our neighbor here. I appreciate your concern for children and the welfare of your neighbors. I also live on a street that's used as a cut-through in Watertown, and with four kids, it's really upsetting. But I have to tell you that Mr. Rascal is, when I found out that he is the one developing this property, that needs attention. It's a gem in Watertown and it's old and it's causing problems. And like our other neighbor said, that it's attracting problems. And here, Mr. Rascal takes, he's the best person to own this property. He cares about the details of, and, and he's thinking about families and children in his planning, and I appreciate that. He, this is not just business to him, this is making life better. And as a Watertown resident, I believe and can, it's clear to see that this property will improve the life of many people, including families, children and residents in the area. I would like to speak to Mr. Rascal's character. I know him personally for over six years and his family, our children, our friends, and I've also worked, seen his professional work. He is someone that goes above and beyond what's necessary to make things better. And I have an example. I used to practice law and I put my practice in retirement to raise my four children, and now I work in education. And knowing that Mr. Rascal is an expert in real estate development, I happened to ask his opinion. He's extremely busy and to get time or on his calendar. And he took my phone call and he met me at the location where we were developing a small private preschool to serve working families in the area that we're developing. And this old building didn't have access to water in the basement level, and I was getting the runaround from a lot of different people, and I just asked his opinion, can we get water into this level for the, for the preschool to operate? And he spent a significant amount of time walking around the building and he said, I have one question for you. Where are the teachers gonna make their coffee? And I said, well, yeah, that's a problem, they're gonna have to go up the stairs and down the hall and around the corner and, but he said, no, really, what are you gonna do with this room? And I said, we just, all we could afford was a U- And I said, "We just...all we could afford was a utility sink." He said, "But where are the teachers gonna have their coffee?" And so...
Sorry to interrupt, but if we really could kind of stick...
Yeah, sorry. So what I want to tell you is that he developed the entire kitchen for this school on his own dime, so that the families and the children and the teachers could have a proper place. This is who you're talking about here, and for folks who think that his...in terms of his character and multiple lawsuits, I just want to counter that and say, this gentleman and his team beautifies everything that they put their hands to, and as a resident of Watertown, I am absolutely thrilled that it's his company that's developing in our city and that will bring our city forward, prosper the businesses and the residents and the green space. He is meticulous and will be an excellent neighbor, and so I just want to speak my support. Thank you.
Thanks very much. There's somebody over here. Did you wanna...any, please?
You can stand in line behind them.
Good evening. My name is Nick Asserly. I'm the Chief Operations Officer for La Court Realty. I work for Mr. Rascal. My job is a lot entailed with the logistics of the construction and the oversight of the property management wing of our company after the buildings are completed and we get tenants in. I'm also one of the people that vets all the tenants that enter our buildings. As we work with different agencies to bring us tenants, we make sure that the people are the right fit for what we do. I'm also the person who would be the one that, before anyone in the town ever said, "Hey, there's a car in the wrong spot," I would probably be there and have them towed out if it was our own tenant. I currently do this at multiple properties, the two properties...one of the properties you saw up there, and I'm not the most liked person in that sense, but on the same hand, I'm also the person, when something goes wrong, I get out of my bed at night and go there to make sure things are taken care of in all our buildings. I currently live, unfortunately, in Newton, but about .9 miles away. I've worked the third shift at the Stop &amp; Shop there in my old job. I currently do all my shopping at that Stop &amp; Shop, and my daughter, who's six years old, her best friend lives at 58 Moore Street, and I'm on that street almost two times a week between pickups from playdates and whatever. But I would be in charge of overseeing that the site is taken care of during the construction and after the construction, and it'd be the person that, if there was a problem with the neighbors, you would have direct contact with me in a 24/7 line, and, "Hey, Nick, there's a bag of trash someone threw out front." It'd be my truck going by at about 5:55 in the morning and throwing it in the back and getting it out of there before anyone saw it. So I just want to put some reassurances. There's people in place in the location that would do the best we could to make sure everything goes 100% right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Reed. I'm actually an employee of La Court as well, and I live on Moore Street in Watertown. I'm a resident as well.
So you're an employee of...
I'm an employee of La Court. Kind of coincidental, but yes, I work for La Court. I'm the same thing as Nick.
But you also live on...
I also live on Moore Street. So I live on 58 Moore Street. I have three small children. I have a five-year-old, a four-year-old, and a newborn, and I moved my family across the country to work for Mo. So, I mean, I really feel like if I'm willing to move my family all the way across the country to work for someone, that I agree with what he's doing. So I'm excited about the project. I will be there if he needs something as well. I live right around the corner, so.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name is Sean Richmond. I live on 63 Edenfield in Watertown. I'm a seventeen-year resident, so I'm not familiar in living in the neighborhood, but I just want to speak to Mo's character. I've known him for seventeen years as well. I've known his family, and I can just say, I'm a local pastor in the area. He is a very generous man. He's a very conscientious man. He's a man of his word, and I would agree with what Victoria said. He also is a man of character and will go above and beyond when he makes a commitment. And so I would just like to recommend that if he's saying he's gonna do a good job on this project and manage it well, he's gonna do that.
Great, thank you. And anyone else, please?
Good evening. My name is Ellen Ridge, and I live on Union Street, number eighty-eight. Union Street runs perpendicular to Moore Street. I appreciate the beauty of the project that they're planning. I just feel that it's too dense for the street. Moore Street is an extremely busy street, as you've heard. It's a major cut-through from Galen Street to Watertown Street, especially at rush hours, and now you're about to introduce approximately seventy additional cars, delivery trucks, trash trucks, landscaping, snowplows, et cetera, in and out of that driveway that they're talking about, for which I don't even agree twenty-two feet is wide enough. I think that they haven't provided enough parking spaces, so to accommodate seventy cars, there's no street parking during the winter, and that has been factored into this project. So while I agree it's a good use of the property to bring housing in there, I feel it's too dense and should be reduced in size. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, can I just clarify that there will be a limitation on the number of parking spaces? They will have...is it forty? Forty parking spaces are on the site? Forty...the shout...so forty...so the limitation...
Ten units while you're passing?
So the limitation will be forty parking spaces for...there will be not more than forty cars coming there on a regular basis?
Thank you.
That'll be registered there? Just...
Thank you. Yes, so it's...to clarify, it's forty-one parking spots, including the ones that are the town.
And so in your response, if you'd come up, and also just to note, we're also gonna be asking questions ourselves after...
Right, right, right. I just want to make...I read that the parking spots are gonna be divorced from the unit, so to say, right? So the owners will have...the renters would have to pay for their parking space, correct?
Right. Would you like me...you had asked me earlier, and I didn't do a good job of responding to you. You'd asked me to comment on traffic and parking.
Actually, not yet. I would like to...
Okay. So to answer her question specifically, she asked about how many parking spaces there are?
Yeah.
And whether or not that included the easement. The easement has a separate, currently fifteen, planned to be fourteen parking spaces. That's separate from our plan, okay? Our plan has forty-one parking spaces, one of which is a shadow space, which means that it's basically covered with something other than parking asphalt.
Bicycle racks.
Right, which could be converted if we wanted to, but we actually feel that we have more than enough, according to our traffic management plan. We have more than enough with forty.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll keep going with comments if people have any. Seems like you want to be the last, and you may be, so please, go ahead.
Actually, I'll be the last.
Okay.
All right. I think none of us have...my name is...
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Arminio Formato, Moore Street. I think everybody here agrees that Mo here, developing the property, would do a great job. It sounds like he's got a lot of people that believe in him, and based on what I've seen, I think he would do a good job, too. I'm here to talk about the problems that Watertown is facing right now, which is congestion and a lot of traffic. My brother and I had a traffic study done on Moore Street, and there's 3,000 cars a day right now that go on Moore Street, that cut through between Watertown Street, going over to the other side, getting to the Mass Pike to Galen Street. So we feel this is a huge problem right now, and adding to the problem is not gonna help. Anybody that has children on that street should definitely be concerned, because it's not just a matter of the amount of cars that go by there. There's different types of vehicles that go through there, also the speed at which they go through there. There's nothing to slow them down. The town hasn't done anything about that. It's a situation that's getting worse in the town, because we've allowed a lot of development to happen here. I personally know people that have moved out of Watertown when it was time to put their children in school because of the density and because of the congestion and the traffic that Watertown has seen increase in recent years. So...and I've been a landlord for the last thirty-five years, and I can tell you, problems happen with apartments, whether they're one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. You can expect things to happen, but I'm sure that Mo has a crew that'll hopefully take care of that. But traffic is a huge problem right now with 3,000 cars a day, at least. The study that we had done didn't even capture the cars coming from Union Street, taking a left on Morse, and then taking a right on Jewett. So there's another...there's other cars that are going there that it didn't even capture. I don't know if anybody was able to see this traffic study. It didn't get posted until Monday, but I do have it, and if you have any questions, I can try to answer them for you, or I can show you the study.
Great, thank you. Is that...not as part of the applicant's information, but is that anything that the town would want to be taking a look at, or I don't know who...
We have a regular traffic counting program in town, and so the Moore Street corridor is part of that. I don't recall where the points are, but it's town-wide, and we've been doing it for maybe...don't quote me per se, but I think since 2016, 2017 at the...so we do have data that we're collecting on a regular basis, and it's four times a year, so that we can see the patterns...
Okay.
Across the whole town.
So this was collected the end of September, and it was across three days during the week. So for me, I feel that 3,000 cars on that side street is a lot. It's too much. I like the idea of a residential developing going, but I think we should be able to compromise, too. I think thirty-seven units are too much, and I think we should be able to reach a compromise with the neighborhood and the developer to make things better for everybody. I think I don't only speak for myself, I think I speak for a couple of people here when I say this. It is a dangerous situation. It's getting worse, and I don't see anything being done to make it any better. I'm sorry, few people that have children there, because you really have to realize what's happening is...it's pretty bad. And they go by pretty fast. Jim was saying he's watching cars on his porch. From six...the study shows from six o'clock in the morning till 9:30 at night, there is pretty much a continuous stream of cars going by there, and at peak times, it's more. So that's something that I think requires some attention, a lot of attention, I think, before anything goes forward. I think these kinds of problems need to be fixed before we add more to it, just like with the MBTA there. It's a mess, and they keep adding traffic. Nothing gets fixed. I mean, this is the same thing that's happening here. The roads are getting congested, they're getting more dangerous, and we're not doing anything really to solve these problems, and we're allowing more construction to happen, more apartments. And for the people, Kathy, who lives right across the street from that, what's gonna happen to her when thirty-seven units are right in front of her? You know, and in the past, it's been used as some kind of school. When my mother was alive, it was a factory. She worked there. It was a whole different scenario, because all those people, they did use public transportation. They used to all walk down the end of Moore Street and go to Galen Street there and use transportation, the public transportation. Everybody now is using cars. I mean, I...you know, it's very convenient now to hop in an Uber and get into town. There's a lot of things happening. I don't think we're looking at it. You know, I think we're just pushing it kind of through here, but I think, like I said, residential development is a good thing, but I think the numbers are too high. I submitted a letter also on my thoughts on it, and I submitted a attachment that showed, you know, about the soil underneath, how it was contaminated. I'm not sure how good of a situation that is for people to live there 24 hours a day. So I just...I don't have answers to things like that, but I would like help to look into it and make sure that we do things that are right for everybody.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right there.
Good evening. My name is Catherine McLeod Hornbuckle. I do reside across the street at 102, 104 Moore Street. While I can appreciate your coming here, and definitely you're a much better owner than the last owner, and the plans are a lot better, I am concerned with the size of thirty-seven units in that building. I believe at the planning board, they said that these units were a little bit smaller than the average units, so that's concerning. You're squeezing thirty-seven units in there, and I'm not sure that's the right number. I'm also concerned with fifty air conditioning units on the roof. You're gonna put a four-foot wall up there. My property directly across the street is a little bit elevated, so when I look out, my property is towards the end and through the courtyard. That sightline is gonna...I'm gonna be impacted. I won't have that nice view of the trees. A lot of my green space that I'm gonna see is going to be gone. So I'm concerned with that. I appreciate people speaking on your behalf. They don't live in the neighborhood. I'm not sure how you would feel if you were gonna put thirty-seven units across from your home on Gleason Road or your home on Edenfield. How would you feel? I live and work in this community. I care about this community, and I think we just need to look at the numbers. Too much traffic. We all back into our driveways, because we can't get out on the street. So I think we need to look at the traffic and the size and the scope. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Maria Bashe. I live on Moore Street. I have two quick comments. The first one is, I'd rather not see the property vacant, and I'd rather it's being used for residential purposes than business purposes. My second comment is, in my interactions with Mr. Rascal, he's been very thoughtful, and he's been very considerate. I trust he will bring the same thoughtfulness and the same consideration to his planning. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Danny Pierce. I live on Cary Avenue here in Watertown, and I understand the concerns. I really do. I get it. But I can also speak, as some other folks here have. So I lived in Watertown for a number of years. My family and I were overseas for seven years as missionaries, and we just recently came back, and we were looking for a place to live, and still on a missionary salary, and I contacted a friend who worked at La Court, and he talked to Mr. Rascal, and he actually gave us a place in Somerville for six months, rent-free, right in between Powderhouse Square and Davis Square, four-bedroom place for us and our four kids, which, if you know anything about that area, you can get some pretty good money on a four-bedroom place. And now we're back in Watertown, which is kind of where we belong. And I just...I'm saying, though, that really, when somebody's moving in, right, you care about what kind of neighbor you're getting, and I think even some of the people who have concerns, and again, you're expressing good concerns, I think you also have to admit that Mr. Rascal and others have worked really hard to try to listen to feedback and do everything they can. And that's my experience and my interactions with him as well, is that he's generous, he's kind, and he is going to try to be a good neighbor, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? You people who wanted to be last, you didn't get to be last. Sorry, okay.
My name is Patrick Mertens. My wife and I own the property at 103, 105 Union Street, so we directly abut the property under consideration. And we may be the only property in the neighborhood that's surrounded by non-two-family houses such as ours. We have the preschool on one side and the property owned by the town of Watertown on the corner, and then this property under consideration behind us. And that's worked out for...since 1982, when we bought the house. And we've gone through quite a number of changes with that property, and I would just like to remind my neighbors that back in the '80s, there was an architectural firm that owned the property, and there was daily activity on the street where workers would come to seek employment. They hung around on the sidewalk. Trucks would pull up, stop, and collect whoever they needed for the day. And if you want to talk about other uses, there's always the possibility that something like that could come back and be worse than any considerations being given to the proposal at hand. The other comment I'd like to make is that the girls' softball or girls' baseball activities with all the cars that park on Moore Street, I do believe that those are parked illegally. And if enforcement were used, those cars would not be there to interfere with any aggress and entrance to the parking lot. I have not met Mr. Rascal yet, but we had a long conversation on the phone one day, and I was very, very impressed with his dedication to improving the neighborhood. So many ideas that I'd never even heard before, such as putting up that beautiful fence and plaques. It's going to be a real benefit to the neighborhood, I do believe. It's going to be a real benefit to the neighborhood, I do believe. And what else about parking? The notion of 3,000 cars a day, I wonder where that number comes from, because I-
Exactly where that number comes from.
Sir.
Actually-
Be respectful. Be respectful.
Sir, yes.
Because I travel on Moore Street and Jewett Street and Union Street on a daily basis, and I never have any problem driving to Stop &amp; Shop or down to Galen Street. So I'm not quite sure where that number comes from, because it doesn't seem to me to reflect my reality of transiting on those streets.
I guess I would just say, sir, and I have no idea who did the study for this gentleman, but, so we have a gentleman who did have a study done-
Well, I'm just, my, this is my personal experience.
And I guess I just want to make clear that-
Okay, thank you very much.
No, no, I don't mean to cut you short, but I just want to make clear that you're giving your observation, the other gentleman gave his observation, and-
And it's only my observation.
So, yeah. Thank you. Anyone else? Sure, please, if you want to get up.
So I didn't make these numbers up, I just want people to know. We had a traffic study done. I have the documentation here, it is online, it is a real traffic study. These are real numbers, not just observations from driving to the store. These counters were put in place, and a real company did this. And it seems like it's not being looked at, you know, nobody cares about it. But 3,000 cars a day on that side street is a lot. And I don't know, nobody wants to believe it, you can look at the study, I give you the copy, it's on, it's on the website now. I don't, I don't think it's something that should be so easily ignored.
I just, I just wanted to weigh in a little bit. So from the town's perspective, when we looked at this change in use, the number of trips that are generated is a reduction, so we did not require a full traffic study. They actually provided a memo with more details than what we would have required. So when the town of Watertown, including the Department of Public Works and our transportation planner and the entire Department of Community Development Planning looked at it, we made a determination that this type of project would not require a study. What you're referencing is that it's a traffic count program, so we would be happy to have that data. I think it's electronically submitted, and I'll make sure to, you know, add that to the town's data. But that's for the number of trips on a road, not for this site and the interaction of the site to the road. So I just, and so the hearing and the discussion here is about this project-
Yes.
-and not about Moore Street.
So I guess-
Because if you, like, for instance, Galen Street has 30,000 trips a day, so it's 10 times the trips that Moore Street has, or maybe even more. So there's a lot of different count, traffic counts can be very deceiving when you just look at the, just the number. So I just wanted to make sure that we reined it back to the-
Maybe I didn't make myself clear there. I'm not trying to raise this problem here tonight to solve this problem tonight, I understand it's about this property. I'm trying to show, though, that we already have this problem, and we're going to add to the problem, we're going to make it worse, we're not going to make it better. That's what I'm trying to say. And I don't know if maybe that came across before, but I want it made clear right now.
I think we all understand your point, sir, and I appreciate it. And so I would just suggest that, you know, you kind of work with staff to-
Sure.
-have the information that you've got and have them aware of it. It's a little bit different, I think, to have an applicant come in for something and then have someone who's a resident on their own have something done. So it's not really part, I would say, of the record for this application, but it's certainly information that you've made us aware of, so thank you, and that you can speak with staff about how they want to have that information.
How they want to handle it, sure. You know what? I have, I find it hard to believe that we're going to put 37 units up, and how a traffic study is not part of this whole thing, doesn't, doesn't belong with this group of data. I think it does. I think, everybody's talking about safety, everybody's talking about congestion and things like that, and this is actually something to do with safety. If you have kids on that street, if you're an elderly person on that street and you're having a hard time crossing and walking, yeah, Kathy is saying, they have to try to back into their driveway, because when you try to pull out of there, you can't, you know? So it's something that, that, what I'm trying to say is that a project like this is going to add the volume of the traffic.
Again, we understand, that's what I'm trying to say.
The information submitted by the applicant is that that's not exactly accurate, is that the number of trips on this road will actually go down if this project is built compared to what currently exists.
Well, it can't, though, because the building's empty, everybody said it's empty, right?
Can I just, can I make a point?
This is what I don't understand. If the building's empty, that means there's no traffic going in and out of there now.
We are not comparing the project, sir, to a vacant lot. We are comparing the project to as it is currently zoned. So although it may be a vacant lot now, it can be used, and I think that's what the chairman was pointing out when he was talking about some of the uses that could be there, including a school. So compared to some of the uses that could be there and the trips that could be generated from those projects, that's what we're comparing them to, that's what the town is comparing them to.
Right. And that's why I was talking about compromising and maybe having less units as opposed to the 37. I thought that maybe we-
So from, so as far as the road and parking issues and all these different points, there's a different entity within the town that deals with that. There's two. There's the transportation planner, there's the traffic commission, and there's DPW, and there's the police department, so there's actually four. So I would suggest that you can come to the traffic commission, you can also come to the department staff, so that the transportation planner, Laura Weiner, or the DPW and the town engineer, to discuss Moore Street and if there are actual violations or issues that are happening there, if there's signage, or if there's other types of traffic coming. The town has certainly been looking at traffic coming measures for that corridor and also at the thorough park crossing, et cetera. So I don't, I just want to make sure that we, we've talked before about this, and I want to make sure to not get too focused on the right-of-ways and the roads of all of Watertown, or Moore Street in particular, or Uni, you know, any of the roadways is not what they're reviewing. And the data that they submitted to us is in keeping with what we found from a traffic impact perspective, and that's what the planning board and the staff report suggests, which is that a residential project would reduce the amount of potential trips, not current, but potential trips to the site by more than half.
Great.
Two and from, but I, and I don't want to-
Sir, you-
I want to hand it back to the chair.
Yeah, we're going to move on now. We have questions ourselves that we'd like to ask, and so I think we've, we certainly understand your point, we appreciate your point. There's, we just need to be able to ask our other questions now. Thank you.
One small one. One small.
Please, sir, and please make it brief.
Yeah, it will be brief.
Okay.
More Street is sectioned in three different zones for parking, two-hour, one-hour, two-hour, one-hour. So in the length of the street, we have signs that say two-hour parking, and some at one-hour parking. As of this moment, there's no enforcement at all. Patrick is right.
Sir, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt-
Patrick is right, if you're going to have the project enforce the park-
I'm going to interrupt you. We're really here to discuss this application-
And that's our safety.
-what's being presented is-
It's safety, is what we're dealing with.
I'm here to discuss this application, and a lot of what-
If you want the project, have the people enforce it.
Sir, gosh, you know, I listened very patiently while you were talking a number of times.
What was the two-hour parking? So his guy's not parking?
Well, you know, sir, I would, I would just recommend that you get in touch with other officials in town to discuss your concerns about the street. You're, you're not really giving us the opportunity to really discuss the application, because you're, you keep coming up and mentioning the same points. So I appreciate your points, but we're going to stop talking about that issue now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Look, you wanted to go on with any questions?
I do, or should we ask some questions?
Yes.
I was wondering if the applicant could just speak to, the two concerns I'm hearing most are parking, specifically, it sounds like monitoring to make sure that the public has access to those spots that are public spaces. So explain to us, number one, how that will work, how that will be monitored, how the people in the neighborhood can be assured, if they can, that any public spaces will remain accessible to them. And my second thing, if you could address the other concern I'm hearing, is traffic in the neighborhood and your assessment of the impacts that the project will have on traffic.
I think they all turned off because it hasn't been activated.
So, we were not required, for this particular project, we were not required to do a traffic management plan, or really, any complex, any complex transportation plan. Under the special permit finding requirement, we could have done very little. But I knew this question was going to come up, and so I really wanted to have a great response for you. We submitted to you, from VHB, which is a Watertown traffic management company, we submitted to you documentation that indicates, and staff has already, has already validated that it's consistent with their findings, that the traffic is going to go, comparing the existing use to the proposed use, and I say existing, I don't mean the vacant building, I mean the existing rightful use. It's going to go down by 43% in terms of 24-hour daily use, and going down to 43% of current. And it's going to go down to 33% of current during peak hours, AM and PM. Keeping in mind that the special permit finding doesn't require us to go down, doesn't even require us not to go up, it requires us not to significantly go up, and we go down significantly. So based on traffic, there's no basis for discussing really much about our need to demonstrate we are not significantly more detrimental, clearly we're not. As it relates to parking, the town ordinance specifically for these types of buildings would say that we can have as little as 37 parking spaces. This is a table that you have, this is a sheet that you have in your package, and it shows that the parking analysis, based on conclusions one through three, no additional parking is required. We have 41 vehicle spaces for 37 units, we have 41 additional bikes parking to further support the project, and we have 14 additional easement spaces for the neighborhood. Conclusion one, conclusion two, and conclusion three are drawn out here. Based on the number of studios, the number of one beds, the number of two beds, the number of three beds, what we are required to have is 49.25 until you count in the multifamily factor. When you count in the multifamily factor in the Watertown ordinance, that goes down to 36.94 for similar buildings. Because what you find is that in these apartment buildings, fewer people have cars. They especially have fewer cars if you have a good parking plan. Member Flor, member Flor asked an excellent question, is that, her question was, is the rental of the space, of the tenant's space, the apartment, uncoupled from the parking? That's critical for anyone who knows how to manage parking. If it is coupled, if it's included in the unit, you're going to have two possibilities. Either they're going to have a car that they store on the site, they don't even use it, but they have a space, so they're going to put their car there. Or you're going to have a vacant space, or they're going to use the space, I suppose there's a third option, or they're actually going to use the space. But by uncoupling it, and people paying less for their apartment and paying more for a space, all of a sudden, you, people don't need their cars. They say, I don't need a car at all, I've got this transportation option, I've got, I love that Charlie card you gave us. And so what you find is the statistics actually speak to, to the fact that you can reduce this down to 37. Now, you don't have to take my word for it. If you're active, if you were to ask Laura Weiner about this in your own transportation department, she would say, this looks great. If you were to ask the traffic engineer who developed this at VHB, a professional, David Black, who's been doing this for many years and has done many of these for me, he would say, there just isn't an issue here. In fact, when I called David and said, I have another project for you, David, I'd like you to go through this project and do this plan for me, he said, why? He said, you don't even need it. I said, David, let's just do it, I want to do it to be thorough. And he did it. So that plan shows, I think the last line of the plan, based on the above transportation, traffic generation, and parking analysis, VHB concludes that the conversion of 101 to 103 Moore Street to 37 residential units will be less detrimental from a transportation perspective than the current uses. Just to go further on this, so you get down to 37 units, that's if this project had no grandfathering rights, this was a brand-new project and they built it from the ground. I could do this and still only have 37 units, but I'm not offering 37 units. I have 37 spaces, I have 40, I have more than we need, and we, and we have a shadow space that we're not even using, because we don't need it. Conclusion two, this complies via grandfathering. The prior use required 96 spaces. The current use requires 40 spaces. We have banked, essentially, in this project, 56 spaces that we're not, we don't need anymore. This is a reduction. Again, we're meeting less detrimental. We don't have to be less detrimental, we can be more detrimental, just not significantly more, but we're significantly less. On the third point, conclusion three, we comply because the Watertown ordinance would say that when you're conversion from one, when you're converting from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, you do not need to add more parking as long as there is an increase of 40% in the demand of the parking. That's your ordinance. In fact, Mr. Mena is the one who pointed that out to me. Not that we need that, because any one of these would fulfill the obligation that there is actually no increased detriment, but all three of them are really consistent with all the findings here. There isn't a need. I hope I've answered your question.
You did. That was a, the second part of my question, I think, was those 15, is it 15 public spaces?
15 now, turning it to 14 because they converted to a handicap.
14. I know it's something that sounds like that needs to be worked out with the town council. Can you tell us what the plan is in terms of ensuring that, I mean, I know that your calculations suggest that you won't need the spaces that you have, but if that is, ends up being incorrect, let's just say, and people are parking from your residence, the residence of your building in the public spaces, is there going to be a way to detect that? Are you going to be monitoring that? If so, how, or will you be working with the city on that?
That's great. So let me answer that by first saying, I have no need for that space, I don't even have a want for it. I would love not to have people cross over there, cross over the property and use that space, if I was a selfish person. But I'm not. I actually think that that space is landlocked, and you don't have access to it, and the objective is to allow the city to use the space. That's my heart on this. I would be, if you said, make this a condition that you put a wall there, I'd say, thumbs up, I'm not interested, I don't need the space. With that in mind, this is meant to be a service to the city. In terms of what we're doing with that space, our agenda is to keep the space, plow it, manicure it, protect it, just as a public service. Now, in terms of the use, people's use of it, I can be sure people are going to use it incorrectly, and part of our job is going to be to monitor it and to police it, and that's part, that's part of what we do. So to the extent that we are policing it, because we want to be respectful, and to the extent the city is policing it, I don't think you're going to have a problem. And when I say we are policing it because we want to be respectful, you don't know me, but when I get an approval from a board, it matters to me. It matters to me to the extent that I want you to be able to drive by my property and say, he did exactly what he said he was going to do, and he manages it beautifully. I want you guys to look at me, because I may be in front of you again, and even if I wasn't, I want you to be able to look at our work and say, I respect what he's doing.
Just a simple, I thank you for that. Simple question, though. So how do you know if a car is parked in that space, whether it's a resident of yours or whether it's a-
Ah, Mr. Ferris gave that answer. Person parks there, walks toward the building, that's a pretty quick hit. That's the easy answer.
Is there any registration of license plates?
Yes, yes.
So you know whose license plate should be parking in your spaces?
We do, we do, but there's always the, the quick and easy solution, you just look at them. Okay, where are you going? You're not supposed to be there. But yes, of course, we, people, people are going to have assigned spaces, and we have parking tags, so we know who's in those spaces.
And my, I don't mean to monopolize the board's time here, but I think I heard a lot of questions about traffic concerns, so could you speak a little bit to any assessment you did on how, I'm sorry, that was the, that was your first, you already addressed that.
Yes.
I think those were the two main questions that I had, just a few quick comments. For myself personally, thank you for your patience, my daughter thanks you, because I know you were planning to go forward last week, and we had an unexpected but happy emergency, so. emergency, so. And also, I thought it was a thorough presentation, I thought it was really well-done.
Thank you.
I know we've heard some concerns about traffic, but, and I think, and I, the reason I interrupted, and I'm sorry, Chris, earlier, but I, I think it's something I heard several times, and I wanted to clarify for everyone that's here, is that our role is to compare, not, this may be a vacant lot today, and it sounds like it is, and, you know, maybe people are parking there, and they're using it as a parking lot, or there is, it's seen as diminishing traffic because it's not being used, but we're not comparing it to that, we are comparing the impacts from what could be there, and as you heard, there'd be a lot there without coming before us. So, according to the, the information that we're looking at, in terms of traffic, it sounds like there's actually, in fact, compared to what could be there, this is a less detrimental thing. I think the traffic, it sounds like a very valid concern from a lot of the neighbors, I think it's something I'd love to see addressed through staff, I don't know if there's, you know, this is beyond our purview, but, you know, as a city as a whole, there, there must be ways to address this, you know, you had a traffic study done, I think the city will consider that, to work with the correct authorities. For, as far as this project goes, you know, I don't think we can fault the owner of this property, where he's proposed something that says on paper it's going to reduce the potential impact for those very real concerns. So those are just a few thoughts that I had, I'll clear it over.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. I think my most significant concern at this point is the forty parking spaces, and whether those are sufficient to serve the thirty-seven units that you're proposing to put in the building. I've read the VHB memo, and I'm not sure it goes far enough to persuade me that, that, that they are. One of the arguments in the VHB memo is that forty spaces is all you need under the zoning bylaw, but that's not the question that I'm actually going to ask. The question is, how do we know that forty parking spaces are sufficient to serve thirty-seven dwelling units? Because one-point-oh-eight, one-point-oh-eight parking ratio is lower, and in fact considerably lower than what I have seen on other projects. So can you speak to that, and?
May I speak a little bit to that, just because we've been doing a lot of work with MIPC, unless anyone else wants to. So we, we just recently did a parking study where we volunteered to have our larger apartment complexes counted at night to see what their occupancy rate was. I don't have the exact numbers, but they were substant, they were substantially under, underused, and our average, but we also have much larger, more two-bedrooms than this site has, our average is one-point-two-five, but that, it fluctuates. And so the zoning that we've recently changed to allow slightly less continues to be more than what we need, and we've consistently, with the twenty-five percent reduction by, by just doing the reduction on projects that we've approved, it has been successful. Census data supports, at this time, twenty-five percent of Watertown residents approximately don't own a car and are commuting by public transportation, and that's just based on census data alone. We believe that it's significantly more, and in corridors like this, and Mount Auburn Street, where you have substantial bus routes, it's going to be more, and also when you have smaller units. So, that, that's just the town's side of what we've been collecting, because it's been an area of interest for us.
What is the appropriate parking ratio, given the information that you just shared?
The MIPC, I wish I, I, we just were talking about this for a different project, but it was commercial, but the MIPC suggested number is less than one per unit, but I, I don't want to be quoted with the wrong number, so I, I can't pull that up for you right now, I didn't know that would be a question.
And that is consistent with what we have found in, in similar-sized, mid-sized buildings. We have underutilized parking, we frankly, even if we rent it for a very small amount, there isn't a need, and they, and we end up having these vacant spaces, parking spaces that we would love to rent, but the reality is that we tend to buy properties in great transportation areas, and it, and it just leaves us so that we end up having these extra spaces. In fact, the state just put out a, a smart, what was it called, a smart parking, smart parking?
That, that's what I was referencing.
The MICP?
Watertown was part of the study, we had five sites used as part of that.
And it, and it basically said that the metrics are already too high, they need to lower. And that's consistent with what we found, what we find in our, in our portfolio.
Yeah, sorry, I have the data for that, and it's actually, they found that thirty-three percent of all spaces, of all parking lots, especially in multifamily units, so not single-family, thirty-three percent are unused at all times. So they said that there's a big, big gap there, and even, of course, you always have to have a little bit of extra spaces, because you never know, but they found that on average there's thirty-three percent extra spaces.
But those are a part, those are of, those are of developments constructed with a parking ratio of what?
So, so actually, no, so that includes Watertown with the current parking ratio that he applied to his site, so, and, and some of, so the, the Gray Star Lawn site, for instance, was counted, the projects down on Pleasant Street that had a reduction, and then projects like Canover were also included, the Gables site, which was under the old parking requirements, but they also have a substantial part of retail and commercial, so that section was not included.
Sir, you know, we've had to like, I'm, I'm sorry, sir, first of all, you shouldn't be speaking without coming to the microphone, but we've had plenty of comments from, from the group here, and the focus of so many of your comments seems to be about traffic on the street, and it's our opportunity now to ask our own questions. Sir, I'm, I'm sorry.
Member Heap, if I could, if I could speak a little more to your question. So, so the, there are metrics that suggest it should be less than one, we are actually doing more than one. But the actual question here at the board today is not if this was a brand-new construction. The actual question is, is a question of substantially more detrimental, and I, I know you're very thoughtful about these things, because I've heard you speak before. And so in answering that question, really, it's not just about, is there enough parking? Which there is, because the statistics show it, the study shows it, the city data shows it, the state data shows it. But actually, the question's easier, because it, the question really is, is it substantially more detrimental? And on all of those three answers, we could increase by forty percent and still comply.
No, my, I'm, I'm asking a practical question, which is, can forty parking spaces on your site handle the cars that will be associated with the residence of your building?
The answer is yes, yes.
I, at one-point-oh-eight, I am skeptical that it can, and the concern there is that you will have residents who will have one car registered with you, because that's all they can register, but have a second car that they're parking somewhere else on the street, or, you know, somewhere else. So the, I'm asking not a, strictly speaking, legal question about the number of parking spaces, I'm asking a practical question of, given data, expert opinion, your experience on other properties, and Gideon's experience on other properties, whether forty parking spaces is sufficient to accommodate the parking demand of thirty-seven dwelling units at this location. And with all due respect to the wonderful bus routes that we have in the area, you know, I, I'm not convinced that those, that, that, and I am not a traffic engineer, that the public transportation available in the immediate vicinity of your property is sufficiently well-equipped to bring the rate, the appropriate ratio down front, down to one-point-zero-eight, which seems to me to be quite low. I guess, two more questions. You, you spoke to the noise, the sound associated with the condensers on the roof of the building. Is there any documentation in the record that, that supports that, that we could rely on, you know, in terms of what the sound will be from those generators at the property line?
So we've had conversations both with engineers and installers, and we're, and that's not documented, but what we could do is condition documentation to that effect, that we'll have, you can have an acoustical engineer prior to start a project, demonstrating that we meet the, the, we comply with the zoning ordinance. And I, I must say, member Heap, I appreciate your thoughtfulness on the parking, I really do. I wish you could get into my mind and know what I see and what I know to be true, because I don't want you to be burdened with that, with, with your, with your uneasiness. At the same time, truthfully, that is what we see, and that's what I say, because that's what I see, but I'm biased, right? But when you're looking at non-biased data, that is meant for planners to use, it's not just designed, it's meant specifically for municipal planning, they're agreeing with what I'm saying.
I guess, but that's, in your experience, can you point us to other properties in your portfolio that feature a parking ratio of one-point-oh-eight, one-point-one, or lower?
Yes, I can. Yeah, I can, I mean, I, you want me to start naming them? You know?
One or two, a couple, a small handful would be.
Certainly, Forty Norris Street, in, in Cambridge, which is just outside of Davis Square, Two to Eight Broadway, which is just next to Sullivan Square, next to, next to an MBT station, MBTA station, and that's where we buy, and that's why when I looked at this building, you know, I didn't buy this building before I looked at the parking ratios, I looked at the parking ratios, and I said, this is really, this is really a good idea, and it's, this is not a hard ask, to come in from, in front of a zoning board and ask for what I'm asking for, because it actually makes sense, it meets the metrics.
I can, I'm trying to use my smartphone to give you the data from the projects that were counted in Watertown, to the, so it depends on where they are, so the ones that are all the way out on Ludbrook Street, where there is absolutely a very, very limited public transportation, tend to need a slight more amount of vehicles. So the range, so I was trying to see what the name of the project was in Watertown Square, it could be the, it's the condos, which typically require more parking, but the, the range for Watertown is between point, point seven and one-point-two, and the one-point-two for the sites out there, or, oh, sorry.
In some instances, like Gables, for instance, they're trying, they're trying to give away their spaces because they have them, so they have to charge less, and they're trying to, so they're getting more people that have cars that end up there. So they, because they have two or so levels of garage, extra space compared to the site next door.
Thank you.
Great, that's it. Thank you. Francis, yes?
Thank you guys so much. I also wanted to, I, I see that outside of unbundling the spaces, you also have a fifty-dollar MBTA Charlie card as one of the transportation methods that you're offering to, to folks, and it looks like you're also going to offer a car share space, maybe, is that going to happen?
So that, that would be something we would have to coordinate, but yes, we think, I think that that site is actually a great site, especially with the fact that we're providing the public amenity space, you know, many people would think I'm crazy for allowing people to walk across my property, and everybody would, and most businessmen would say, no, no, I don't want the insurance liability, I've never had that opinion, I've had the opinion, be insured up to the teeth, and try to be neighborly. So yes, I think that that makes sense, it doesn't have to be limited to, to our tenants, I think it could be used by the neighborhood.
Thank you, yeah. And as a, a renter who doesn't own a car and depends on public transit, and also, I work, I'm a urban planner, so I work a lot looking at transportation and all of this, and you see that if you look at the statistics, it's primarily single-family homes that have the highest rate of car usage, so truthfully, rental units, especially apartment units, have less car usage, and there's a lot of information online about it, and the MIPC study, so that's the Regional Planning Agency, so they're public, they don't have any, any set in the argument, and they're the ones that showed that thirty-three percent of all parking spaces are unused. And one of the issues with a lot of parking spaces is that approximately, each parking space costs approximately twenty thousand to thirty thousand dollars to build, which then gets added to, you know, either what you pay in rent, or what you pay in housing, which then makes it less affordable for people to live in. So having less, less, less parking helps people have less cars, helps us have less traffic, which is definitely an issue, and I agree, I live in a, I live right near Mount Auburn Street, so I deal with having to run across to catch the bus, and it's terrifying. I also want to highlight that if you have more people that depend more on transit, you have more people walking on the street, which means that cars need to be even more careful, because it's when you don't have many people on the street that it becomes more of an issue. One of the questions I did have was for the handicap accessible parking, I don't see how they enter into the ramp or the walkway, it was, it seemed that there's planters there, so I just wanted to understand how that works.
Are you talking about the two parking spaces that, that service the building proper, or do you mean the parking space on the easement area?
I, that's a great question. I think they're on the easement area, so they wouldn't need to access the space.
It's your two, you're talking about the two that are right adjacent to the building?
Eastern.
Yeah, that's adjacent to the building.
Okay, so those are the public ones?
No, they're, they're the ones for the site.
Okay. So for those two, how do they just enter the building, if you're on a wheelchair, how do you go in? Just because I can't understand it.
So, so they would, they would have to pass, they would, they would unload here, let's say, and they would end up passing over to here. Are you asking me about this structure right here?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that structure is not necessarily a curbing, it's, it could be just paint and lines.
Okay.
So the idea is that they could unload here, they could unload directly onto this flat area, and then get up that ramp.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
That was it.
Any other questions?
So, I mean, just to follow up on that, on your landscape plan, it is shown as if it's planting there, just so you know, if you go to the?
Oh, I see, okay, is that, is that what it shows? Okay, well, we'll, we'll correct for that.
Thank you.
So, you know, my, my questions really kind of focus on the, if you go to the colored site plan, thank you, you know, so we've, we've talked about, and you've illustrated, landscape treatment really primarily throughout the site, with the exception of the, the eastern part of the site, which is so tight, and, you know, I've, for a few times, as we've, as the building's come up for consideration, including for this application, I've gone out and really like walked over the neighboring properties to try to get a look into, in particular, the, the space that is the easternmost plain, which joins Moore Street.
This area here, you're saying?
Very, very tight.
It's very tight, yes, agreed.
It's hard to even look into it.
Walk, yes, agreed.
I don't think you can walk there.
Oh, I've, I, when I have my blue jeans on, I can get through there, yeah.
So, you know, I, I really couldn't get myself in there, but I was looking in to see what it's like, and, and so, number one, I'm wondering what type of treatment you're anticipating there, but really, you know, not to keep you in suspense, my, my concern really is for the floor plans for what's called Level One and Level Two, and the units on Level One, if you look at them, like the, the, I guess, units, units one-oh-eight, one-oh-nine, and one-ten, look into a tiny light well for their living spaces that's fully submerged below ground. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's clear in your mind, you know, what that is, because when you go up to Level Two, Level Two is the level that is actually at, at grade, so Level Two, the people, those bedrooms for those units are going to look at the fence that, I'm not sure if it's on your property or the neighbor's property.
It's the neighbor's.
So they're going to have a view that's not much deeper than, you know, from this edge of the table to that edge of the table, and, and then the living areas for those units are like fully below grade in light wells, within.
You said one-oh-eight and one-oh-nine?
Uh, one-oh-eight, one-oh-nine, and one-ten.
Yes.
Those are, those are all duplexes, so, you know, you've done like a good amount of research, you probably know I'm an architect, you probably know that.
Yes, I do.
You know, work extensively, extensively on multifamily housing.
Sure, I do.
And I'm not critiquing the layouts or anything, I'm just really wanting to make every- I'm just really wanting to make everyone clear on what that would actually be like to live in those units. Because if, from the second level, which is higher, my view is of a fence, and from the lower level, my view is of a concrete well or something like that, that again is, in my mind, less wide than this table. And it's, it's just really difficult, I think. And, you know, Unit 107, which is to the west of it, I guess, and faces onto a partial northern border. You know, I think, from what I can tell, at the, at, at Level 1, that type of view, again, is fully into what is, like, really old fencing that I'm not sure if you own. It does, the plans don't say that you're replacing it. But it just, and I got a little concerned, again, in as part of your presentation, Level 106, where for, I'm sorry, Unit 106, where you're saying that two skylights would be there in place of windows. And so, I'm assuming that's, again, in relation to these, like, super tight conditions, that I think those units would be very, in particular, 108, 109, 110, very, very hard for people to live in. The other aspect of my concern is, is, you know, I know that, I'm assuming the building will be fully sprinkled and, you know, code compliant, et cetera. But it just really concerns me for units like that, you know, in a case of some type of building emergency, that, that people, in a sense, might be so kind of far away from observation in a sense, of really kind of knowing that someone's in trouble. So if you would really address that, I'm just having a hard time clearly with those units.
Well, your hard time is very similar to mine, because I struggled with those units. They're not easy units to work with. And adaptive reuse, as you know, of course, is difficult to work with. But let me, let me address a couple of things, low-hanging fruit to begin with. The topography on this side of the building, adjacent to 108 and 107, is actually a slope. So these windows become increasingly visible. Of course, when you get up to this window well and this window well, there's no question that you have, you're significantly below grade. But even these windows, the addition of these windows into this unit is going to add a tremendous amount of light. And certainly, we, we are meeting the light requirement in a variety of different ways. And I know you have a question on light requirement, and I'm prepared for your question.
You know what, my question, the reason I was asking the question is to make sure that, so I was asking questions about, we don't need to extensively address it. I was asking questions to make sure that you and your architect and whoever else you're employing have looked into confirming that the windows that you have here provide adequate daylight in terms of the state building codes and health codes, et cetera.
Right, right.
And then the question, second question about that was to also confirm that the quantity of windows in relation to the property lines was adequate, were adequately sized for fire regulations. I just wanted to raise the questions, because if the answer would be, "No, we haven't thought about that,"
Oh, no, we have.
"And we've got a bunch more windows," then we shouldn't be looking at this if you have a bunch more windows. I'm assuming you've looked at it, because I asked the question a long time ago, and these are... What I'm really concerned about is the quality of life for someone whose living room looks into a basement light well. And, and, you know, that would, could be one thing if I'm seeing partially above-grade into something. But really, it's, those wells on the east side are going to be, as far as I can tell, full height of that floor level.
Yes.
And then what sits on top of those wells is a six-foot, whatever it is, stockade fence or something. So my feet on the floor of that living room or dining room is whatever, you know, maybe 15 feet below where the actual light is occurring.
Right. So, so I get that. My staff will know, my feeling about basements is basement units have to be nicer than units on upper floors to make them livable, all basement units. Our attention to basement units is higher than any other floor. Now, in terms of light, you know, the reality is that people close their drapes, okay? It's not like they, they let all the light in, they close their shades.
For people who want to have daylight, they might not do that.
Well, they wouldn't rent the unit. You know, they're, they're, when you think of this unit, this is a duplex, these are duplex units, right? So they're two levels, right? So, and they're intentionally two levels. In fact, the question would be, do you want to put the bedrooms below? Or do you want to put the bedrooms above? And my position is, I want the bedrooms above. A common area space can be very comfortable with windows closed, TV, pictures on the walls, you can put brick on the walls. There's so many things you can do in a common area space, in a big, wide common area space, that has sparse ambient light coming in from multiple fenestrations. It can have nice effect. Whereas in smaller rooms, having a specific, having a singular window has a better feel to me. So my feeling is that if you were to walk into this space with all of the canned lights that we're going to have in there, we're going to have a lot of illumination in there. When you walk into there, your initial feeling is not going to be...
I'm not saying that you can't make it bright by artificial illumination. I'm just saying that they're really tough units to live in. You, you, someone will more likely have to look at their phone or their TV to understand, is it sunny out, versus actually look out the window, because they're just not going to see.
They're going to get some light in. But I, but I don't, I don't mean to, I don't mean to disagree with you. As I said to you from the outset, they're hard units, there's no question. But I believe that if I walked you into that unit when it's done, you're going to say, "Oh, this is fabulous. You put so many elements into this to make it feel cozy." That's how we're going to do it, because we're not interested in making those units feel like basement units. And that's why I said to you, my staff would say to you, "My dedication to basement units is kind of unusual. The basement unit has to be nicer than the, than the upper-level units."
I, you know, I respect your approach and your comments. As somebody who designs units for a living, those are going to be just very challenging
Yes, they are.
to, to live in. And I'm, I, again, more, I know that obviously the building will be fully code compliant, but I just have a concern about an event in the building and...
So let's, let's talk about that event. So just keeping in mind, this first floor level has an egress right here. So this, this unit egresses directly to here. This is what, these units are actually very close to the, to the courtyard egress. And it's a fully sprinkled building. And the bedrooms would have, even though they are not required to have operable windows because it's, because it's, because it's sprinkled, they would have fully opening and usable windows. Again, I, remember, Ferris, I have to tell you, I know the difficulty of these units. I have struggled with them. But I also want you to know, I've done some pretty amazing things with basement units. And if I were to show you what I've done on so many units, you would come in, you would walk into that unit and not get the feeling... Remember, you're walking in from ground level. You're not going down to that unit. You're walking from ground level into that unit. It's not going to have the feel of a basement. And by the time you walk into that unit and you experience the textures we'll be putting on those walls, it's just not going to feel like that. It's going to feel like, "This is an incredible unit." And then at some point, you're going to go, "Oh, this is kind of basement." But it won't dawn on you until you've gotten all the way over to that window.
When I walk into a space, I think, "Oh, that's a nice view." And no one is ever going to walk into these spaces and think that.
Yeah.
So, not that I'm looking for nice views from every window. It's just, I find it very, very challenging myself. I know that those units are duplexes, and so I just wonder, in a sense, I know it's, in a sense, given space in the building, but the fact that it is at that location, basement space, why you might not have considered actually using that space for something else versus living space and just having flats in those locations that at least would be looking into a stockade fence versus looking into a light well below a stockade fence?
So I did consider that. And when I looked at all of the places that we could put amenities, it seemed to me like that was out of the way. And it seemed to me that it, it, it's not really in a place that I felt was centralized. And keep in mind that the reality is, I could go with lesser units in this project. That's not really a problem. I can go with lesser units and still make it lucrative. But the reality, the other reality is that at 37 units, and we're giving six units to affordable housing, whereas 36 units, we go down to five, there is a desire to try to keep those units at a good level, get the affordable housing benefit to the city. And yes, these are not ideal units. At the same time, there are going to be people who are happy to have that unit at a lower price, and they're going to love living there. That's my view.
Okay, I'm, I'm not in agreement.
I understand.
So, I just wanted you to, to be clear on that, on understanding that. Could you talk about the, if we go back to the site plan? And just talk about what site-wise is going to be done through that whole area? Whose, whose fence is that? Is it going to remain? It's, you know, understandably being people's backyards and side yards, and especially for this building. It's not a space that, right now, or for, it seems, many years, has been cared for. So whose fence is it, and what's happening with it?
So you're talking, again, still about the east side?
I'm talking about, basically, the whole site plan that's, that's colored doesn't color this three-run space that's east and north along the border of the building where the, where the, you know, daylight is challenged.
Sure. So, I'm not in love with that fence. I believe it's owned by the Watertown Housing Authority?
Part of it, then, right? Because that's, that's two lots wide, right?
What's that?
So the first lot, I assume, is the Housing Authority? The second lot, I believe, might belong to the gentleman who...
Yes, but I believe the white fence only goes to here. I don't believe it goes all the way down.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's dilapidated, it's falling over. It would be, I would be totally inclined to replace that if I had to choose. And, and I don't really want that thing up against my building. So what's going to naturally happen is I'm going to, I'm going to have to interface with, with the town, with the city, and see what they'd let me do with that. Now, in terms of what the needs are, what, what can be accomplished here, we do have an egress right here, so there's going to need to be some passage onto that concrete. But the reality is, there certainly is a possibility that we could remove some of the concrete here and put landscaping in that area. But in order to do that, I would, you know, I would really want to do that in concert with, with doing something with that fence.
Yeah, I, again, you know, I, I was on, I guess it's a daycare, right? I was on the site of the daycare, standing at that corner, trying to, like, see. And it's, like, difficult even to see into the space because it's so tight and...
It's overgrown.
So overgrown.
Yes.
And so, I would say, not maintained. So, you know, what you've talked about is the border of one abutter. But as far as I can tell, there are two others, and I'm wanting to understand, are those your fences, or are they...
So Mr. Merton is, I believe, in this spot, correct? This is, you are, I don't know if you can see that on the plan there?
Sir, if you look on the screen, you'll, you'll see where your yard is, I believe, right?
Yeah. And I would be very happy to work with him and figure out, you know, what we can do to beautify that area for his benefit, for the benefit of the property.
Mr. Chair, would you suggest that we have a condition that would allow or modify the landscaping or add landscaping a feasible in fencing along that?
You know, that might be the scenario, it's just that it's...
It's very hard to tell with the constraints.
It's super hard to tell, and it's even, like, physically hard to see into when you're, like, standing there, like, trying to, trying to figure out what the heck are they going to be looking into. And so, it's, it's just, I wanted to point out that we hadn't discussed it as part of this presentation. I want to make a point of that, and, and understand who owns it, what's going to be done about it, and what can, what can make the scenario better for units who literally will be renting and then having some type of barrier what looks like, you know, five feet away or so.
So it, it seems to me we could certainly place a condition on this, if you'd be amenable to that, that allows the staff to make a decision on what should be there. But I can tell you from my own heart on this is that the nicer we can make it, the more I'd like to do that. So it's not a cost consideration. It's really, I would just love to do that. Having said that, the, the ability to coordinate that through, it's easier to do that through people than do that through the city. Trying to do that with the, through the city is actually more complicated. So again, if we, this could be conditioned so that perhaps I could approach the city about replacing the fence. Or possibly, instead of replacing the fence with a stockade fence, maybe using a split-level fence, so that you've got some border there at the same time as you're getting light passage there. And I, you know, at all at my cost, I'd love to do that.
I mean, some of the, some of the neighbors might want, you know, some type of visual buffer, but maybe a planted visual buffer.
Right, and that, and I would be, I would be happy. Patrick and I have had wonderful conversations. The idea of investing plantings on his property or on my property is just, that's part of the neighborhood experience, so I'd be happy to do that.
You know, for, for staff discussion, if, if it were to be a planted buffer, I guess I would just want some confirmation that, in fact, it's not going to eventually grow taller than the current barrier that's there, which is maybe six feet or so. The real, in my mind, challenge for those units is, it's not even view, it's just access to seeing, is the sky blue or is it gray out today? And they don't have that.
Yeah, you had, you had some other questions that I had, as far as that goes. And, I mean, we also talked about the idea, if, if those window wells were rebuilt, they're existing today. So if you ended up with bigger, you know, potentially two window wells combined together, you would end up with at least more square footage of area to let light into those areas. But, you know, until they can figure out if that's structurally feasible, they would also need to have permission from a property owner, because there would be, I think, they're going to have to talk to the property owners, no matter what, on that side of the property, because it's going to be very tight during the construction process. And so I, I wouldn't be surprised if they would, if they can get agreements, rebuild fences and plant, plantings on adjacent properties. But if there was a condition, then we can, we can certainly be a part of that discussion as they come up with those planting plans and landscaping.
Thank you. So is there any, are there any restrictions that we would know of that limit the proximity of a window well to a neighbor's property line?
I don't think, limitation on the, how close a window well can be to a property line?
Well, that's regulated by the Building Code. I'm not the building official, so I'm not the appropriate person to answer that. I know this is an existing building with existing openings, so whatever that is would be grandfathered in. They wouldn't have to close up windows
Yeah, we were talking about expanding.
if it didn't meet certain requirements. But yeah, there's percentages, typically within three feet, from what I recall. And again, I'm not the building official, is no window openings. At five feet, there's a percentage, and then as you get further away, the percentage grows.
Like, just to clarify, it was actually the window structure of the well? And how close it can be?
As far as I know, there's, no, there's no necessarily requirement as distance from a lot line for a window well.
And are the, on, on Level 1, are those wells really existing?
Yes, yes, you'd be surprised.
But I am surprised.
You are surprised, and they're, and they're covered by these black slabs.
Yeah.
They're covered by black slabs there.
So what's your intent? Are you going to reuse the existing wells? Are you rebuilding them, and what's the material?
Oh, I, we'll, we'll discover what their, you know, what their condition is. I wouldn't expect their condition to be great. So we'll either reuse them, or we will rebuild them in place. And certainly, we can consider the idea of adding things, adding wells together to get more light angulation and penetration, if that's possible. But that's going to require understanding what's behind those walls.
I mean, and I guess I didn't see them because they're covered, and I guess they're covered because they've been leaking, you know?
Yeah, right.
So you'll have those issues to deal with in terms of creating drains, et cetera, down at the bottom of those wells.
Right.
And it's just a tough scenario. And I would be interested in knowing that when I do look out my window to look up to see, is it sunny out, that I'm not looking at some, something that's kind of a rundown well that has...
Oh, no, we wouldn't do that. We're just, we're not...
It doesn't sound like you would.
We wouldn't do that.
But I'm just saying, we haven't really talked about it, and that's why I'm asking these questions.
Sure.
Because I am clearly concerned about it, so. I guess I had one other, thank you.
Thank you.
I had one other thought, you know, people have talked about sightlines, et cetera, in terms of the ramp. I'm glad to hear that the idea for the ramp is that it would be increased in width because it's really quite narrow. What I'm noticing in terms of the landscaping plan is I think there are Japanese red maples that are low, you know, at either side. And it sounds like, for practicality, I'm not talking about the trees, which are kind of lifted up in, in terms of sightlines, but it seems like landscape coverage to the left and to the right of the ramp at the sidewalk level should really be treated more like ground cover versus something that's got volume that would prevent somebody in a, you know, descending car from...
Oh, absolutely. That's, and that's the intent, is that those, the selection of those Japanese maples will be low-growing Japanese maples.
I think that's the problem, is that if you're in a car that's... But I think that's the problem, is that if you're in a car that's coming up, that, and you're a little bit lower than grade anyhow, that I, I think the, my concern is that, in fact, there should not be low planting, which is going to block your, when your eye level is lower, that my suggestion is that...
You just place ground cover, just ground cover?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm, I'm, yeah, that's...
Like, sand or something, but I'm just a little concerned about that. I'm all for trees, as people know, but, you know, I, I guess we've had a number of people speak, we're going to go into closed session now, unless other people have more questions for the applicant.
Not me.
We, we've had a number of people speak, the, you know, it's, some were in favor, some were opposed. There are also about half a dozen letters that I noticed in the package. And the letters, for the most part, I'm going to, I believe there was one in opposition, the other letters were in favor of the application. The planning board and their approval had a number of conditions that they mentioned, some of which we've talked about. Gideon, would you, would you mind maybe going over the planning board's positions?
Sure.
Just kind of overviewing them?
Yeah, and some of them speak to some of your concerns with the landscaping, but as always, we'll be sure to update the control plans with what's been submitted, but I'll just call out the key points with access and parking. There's a, that's a, that's not a standard condition, and it talks about finalizing an easement agreement between the site and the town property at the rear to facilitate safe circulation. That actually has been submitted to the town, and it's been reviewed by our attorneys, and we've been going back and forth, the final to be submitted to the town council for review. And so there's three components of that, the final details and documentation, which they already did submit that. The parking facilities and driveways for the ingress and egress shall be designed, constructed, installed, and repaired, operated, and maintained in good order, and they have to have a monitoring program as part of a TDM program to help address the parking management. So that's in addition to our standard enforcement, so that's an additional requirement, and it's going to be in line with our other transportation demand management sites. So although the site doesn't trigger the review, because of the parking management components of it, we felt that that would be the best way to ensure that it had a regular cycle and be reviewed. There's an affordable housing requirement, that includes unit comparability, but those are standard. There's a waste management and recyclables, which was suggested previously with a time limitation of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the latest. DPW's standard utility sewer and stormwater, and a substantial number of conditions in regard to landscaping and exterior lighting. So the, the actual plans needed to be submitted to staff for final review for the mix, size, quantity, and appropriateness. And then specifically, staff's suggestion and planning board's endorsement was for keeping existing trees where feasible along the Moore Street corridor, rather than removing them for others. There's a theme that is proposed, which was not understood at first, but when you have a good viable tree that survived, that was staff's recommendation for that, that particular condition. There would be a certificate of completion for all the landscaping and irrigation. This is carried over, but I think that there's a suggestion that suitable soils, such as structural soils, would be considered if, in an instance where it was needed, but in this case, there's no actual street trees, but there are site trees. And then we have a standard requirement for the landscaping be installed unless it's out of season, and the exterior lighting shall comply with the zoning ordinance, which is the full cutoff, with no light intruding onto adjacent properties. And so that, that's a summary of our, all of our conditions so far.
Okay. And then, you know, so we've talked about like, a good number of things, the parking ratio, a number of people have mentioned, obviously, traffic on, on Moore Street, and, you know, we've been addressing that, a number of people have been addressing that as well in terms of this use versus other potential uses in, in the parking and traffic generation. There is some conversation about acoustic engineer and rooftop mechanical equipment. One thing that somebody raised was soil's condition, I'm sorry.
I just had one more question spring to mind, if you don't mind, and I think it's for, for probably Gideon. We talked about traffic and the numbers overall generated by the project going down. One of the concerns raised by the residents nearby was sightlines and the, you know, ability of cars to enter, well, I think, exit the driveway, site driveway, given that cars traveling along Morse Street and the speeds at which they travel. Is there anything that we've looked at with respect to the sightlines exiting the property?
We, we looked, we looked at the condition, and we looked at if there was any options. DPW took a look. There's very limited options. One, one scenario was to consider moving the location of the ramp, since it's being rebuilt, but it's being extended. But even if it was moved, it would disrupt other situations, and we have a substantial stormwater drain, which is probably the original brook, running through the property. So you can't move it, if you're looking at the property to the left, very much, so you, and then you hit the center drive aisle. From a perspective of, it's, it's been there and it's existing, and the previous use, which over time has had a lot of different activity and had many more trips entering and exiting than residential use, we felt that that was better. But, so the, long story short, is we looked at if there was a better way to have sightline conditions that are better, and there did not appear to be any options to make it improved.
I should back up then. Would a traffic engineer say the sightlines are okay objectively, or they are, there's their, are they inadequate?
Well...
And need, and need to be, you know...
Yeah, I'm not a traffic engineer, and you probably, the curve in the road, you would have to come up with some type of device to allow visibility. So, not for this particular use, but if you were going to put in a, a large use on a corner like that, there would have to be some type of, of change. Because, but you have an existing condition, you have a road that has a bend in it, and you have a, a drive access that's been there. And so there's, there's, working with existing conditions versus creating new ones. In some instances, there's mirrors or other types of devices that can help. In this case, I don't think it, there didn't, we didn't believe that there was anything. If, if you feel that there's more direction that you could give to staff, one scenario that had been discussed was looking at traffic calming on the street to slow it down. The data that you sent, actually, the average speed on the street was 25 miles an hour, which is slower than standard, because I think of the curve, so that's a natural slowing down. There might be some scenarios in looking at the storm drains over time to create some bump outs to help define where the drive lanes are along Moore Street, but that's off-site improvements along the corridor. So our engineers at DPW did not believe that this was an issue. The fire department did not believe that this was an issue as far as accessing, they were actually very happy to see the expanded ramp. Someone mentioned that it's still narrow, that just, I know that's not your question, but it is 22 feet, which is the standard width of a two-way road. So it's not as wide as a driveway, but there's no parking on it either, so. So from that perspective, they're actually substantially improving the situation, because before, you had a blind spot, plus, you could, you may not see a car coming in as you're pulling up. And so with that potential, they've, they've improved that, and that was initially discussed under the previous project, and this, this design incorporates it in a better way.
So what do people generally feel, in terms of, it doesn't sound like we're necessarily looking for new information to be provided, or documented, but how do, or how do people feel about that?
My primary concern, I'll, I guess I'll start, I think of any, was that I don't think, that I think is specific to this project is, is the ramp, the exit onto the street. It's a blind area. Gideon just mentioned it's pre-existing use. And it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, Gideon, but maybe the best way that that could be addressed, any safety concerns that might be raised by that, if any, I'm not saying that there necessarily are, would be perhaps something off-site, like a bump, is that right? Like, on maybe either side?
Yeah, or some other type of traffic calming. And, and just to be clear, it's, it's creating, it's creating a better situation than the existing condition. So there's an existing driveway, there's a curb cut, and there's a right to that access point, and they're improving the ramp to make it wider. So I, I, I want to make sure that, on record, that it's, it's an improvement over the existing situation for that parking lot.
Sure.
From a safety perspective.
I think that kind of segues into my overall thoughts on the project, is that compared to what we have there now, I know there are concerns, but what we're looking at here is, is this more detrimental, or, or, as the applicant has pointed out, the standard is, is it substantially more detrimental than what's there currently? And I, I know that there are traffic concerns, and we take those seriously. I, I think that's more of a neighborhood street problem, though, than a this project problem, where we look at the fact that what could be there, if somebody else comes in, could be significantly more impactful in terms of adding cars to the street, safety concerns with the ramp that's existing versus the improvements that, that I see in this project. I think it is located in an area that will encourage public transportation. I, I think there's a lot of things that are in this project, I, I will say, to the credit of the applicant, that, that are over and above, and really show to me a well-thought-out project. So those are my thoughts. I'd love to hear what the rest of the board is thinking, because there's often concerns raised that, that, you know, maybe aren't immediately apparent to me, but my overall impression is that, looking at this project, I know there are concerns from the neighborhood, but it seems to me that compared to what could be there, or what is there now, this seems like it would be a good fit to me.
Thank you. Krista?
I, I've wrestled with this, versions of this project for three different iterations of it, and I'm no, you know, I appreciate everything the applicant has done to attempt to address everyone's concerns that have been expressed throughout the course of two prior public hearings. I have no enthusiasm for this project whatsoever, for several reasons. I think the first and foremost is that 37 units in a two-family zone is, is, is a lot of units in a two-family zone. In a building that was built for other purposes other than residential, and was never zoned or planned by the town of Watertown to accommodate that number of units. To me, it does not have enough parking, but I'm not a parking engineer, and there is competent evidence in the record that 40 spaces is enough, so I'm, I'm going to respect the opinions that we've heard that are better than mine on the number of parking spaces. There are, there continue to be several units in the interior of the building that have been described by our, our architect on the board as places that would be very tough to live in. And to me, that also speaks to, you know, perhaps 37 units is too many, and, you know, the, the interior of the building perhaps ought to have been chopped up in a way that is different than what has been proposed. All that being said, however, I am struck by the fact, by the, by several, I think, things that may be cut in the opposite direction, which is that staff has looked at this repeatedly, worked with the applicant, the planning board has looked at it and given a recommendation and support, and, you know, we just heard from Gideon that some additional concerns, like, you know, traffic along the roadway and sightlines at the driveway, DPW is okay with it, fire department's okay with it, and police is okay with it. So I am, I am, for my own part, I, like I said, I would characterize it as I have no enthusiasm for this project, in this location, in this building, but I am, at this point, having gone through this three times, struck by the fact that others have looked at it and, you know, and have not poked holes in, in it other than the ones that I've just identified. So I am grudgingly, I'm grudgingly coming around, given, to some extent, given, given, you know, the comments of others that have been, that have been submitted to the record.
So, are, thank you, are there some components, maybe, that we've discussed, or other thoughts as conditions that might make it more, that, more appropriate for, for you?
I'll, I think I'll, I'll wait and hear what others have to say.
So I respectfully disagree with it not being a right use. I've, I work a lot on neighborhoods and seeing a lot of vacant properties that then become blighted properties, that then are not only a hazard in terms of health and safety for people walking around there, and especially kids, but also bring down market values, and it's that broken window syndrome, where you see one thing go bad, and then that actually spreads, and there's data that shows that that happens. So I think that this is a much better use than having it be vacant and blighted for, you know, for who knows how long, and the more you wait, the more expensive it'll be to make it into something good. It's also really close to the bus station. I would love to be as close to the bus station, being somebody that depends on the bus every single day of their life. It's, you know, it's less than 10 minutes walk away from the yard, there's literally a bus stop, less than, it's like, on the same block. It's near a mixed-use area, so if you're thinking about a good place for multifamily housing, I think this is great, and it's, it's, it's been a building that's been there since, you know, there was a river there before, so. It's been there for a really long time, so I think that it's not so much that you're changing the neighborhood character, because the character's already there, and that building has been part of the character. I think that, yes, that it's really helpful to have data to show that parking has been overbuilt, and it's really great to hear that both the different departments in town, the planning board, every different folks have said that it, it looks good in terms of parking. I, as a, I am really glad that you're actually increasing the units of affordable housing, especially since that means that your profit margins are going to be smaller than they probably would be, but that's a huge added bonus, especially for folks that want to stay in town. Also, having a lot of friends that live in basement units, it's definitely not the best, you know, of course, I'd love a corner unit with windows, but I would much rather choose that near a bus area that connects me to my job, than have to live somewhere else and pay much more and be much farther away. So I, I agree that it's not the best in terms of design, but I also think that there will always be somebody that is more than happy to live there. In terms of the traffic, I agree, and it's, I think it's a greater town issue, and I know that the town's doing a lot with the complete streets and other projects to really mitigate some of the traffic. So I think that it's definitely talking more to the other, the traffic commission. I'm always in touch with them about my street, so it's important to bring it up to, to other people, too. But those are, those are my thoughts on the project.
Great, thank you. You know, I, I think, so we've talked about a, a number of things in detail. I think that, like, for, and, you know, we've gone through a number of applications for this building, so I would say that very much in its favor, which we really didn't touch on, is, I would say, the, the, the quality of the exterior materials is, in even some of our newer buildings that we're having in Watertown, it's, it's nicer, really, to be having siding that is lapped and has shadows and has some animation to it. So I think that's, those are good characteristics, so I'm pleased about that. We talked about the, the rooftop mechanical equipment, their screen... We talked about the, the rooftop mechanical equipment, they're screening it. Sometimes we have to ask that question to make sure that they are actually doing it. It's the height of the equipment or what they've identified is four feet. So that's, you know, a height that's about this tall. And the initial benefit is the acoustic component to prevent the sound from spreading horizontally. I, I have a, as I've said, a very hard time with those units on, on the, the lower floor, level one, the three units, 108, 109, 110 at level one, being really fully submerged below grade within such a tight space. And I guess I, I do note, I'm not necessarily looking to have it go that way, but I, I do note that since those units are duplexes, the, the client could still do studios upstairs, potentially three studios that were not duplexes and not have people living in those conditions down below. If, if people were going to live there, I would want a pretty like strict and rigorous kind of enforcement of some characteristics of the light wells, that they should be finished in, with a light finish, they should be, you know, in good repair. And with the suggestion that in fact, at the, the bottom of it, ground cover like a pack of sand or something so that people are not looking out to crush stone to like a gray wall and really again struggling to see like what's up there. I, if we were to approve it, I think that it should be conditioned along that, the border of the east and north and east again border along the building in terms of the fencing and/or landscaping. If it were going to be landscaped, my suggestion that it should be managed so that it would not be above six foot in height as a fence or as a landscaped element so that people get as much daylight as they can, but still give the neighbors the privacy that they would probably want to have. I guess I wonder about the, the traffic calming, if traffic calming is something that should be studied. If this were approved after a certain amount of use and then in a sense, some way conditioned to tie back into the development? Or what would the possibilities be for that in terms of? Our concern is not so much, you know, one issue is for the overall street, but I think that's a very different issue. I'm, I'm more concerned about the traffic calming in terms of the, the egress from the ramp and the sightlines and visibility.
So all the, all per view of the right-of-way is with DPW? So you could, you could suggest traffic coming at, along the frontage or you could suggest considering options that they would bring to DPW? But ultimately, it would only be a suggestion and the town would have to deem that it's safe and approvable. There's stormwater, there's all these different reasons that you might not be able to do something that might make sense. And I don't even, I don't know what the width of the road is right there. So it may not be, it, it may be as narrow as you can make it. So.
So what, could you just, you know, briefly elaborate some scenarios that might mitigate the traffic? Are we talking about a speed bump? Are we talking about some type of like flashing light when a car is coming off the ramp?
Yeah. So, so one option would be having bump outs at the entrance so that the curb line went into the street slightly more. If the street is wider there, that would be a logical place so that it would create a landing and the sidewalk could actually slightly bump out. So that, as you were talking, that would be one, one logical option that could work. If, but I do, there, there are a lot of constraints that you, you know, that is a raised road. Other scenarios would be further down. So you would end up with, and if this is a, is there a lot of trucks on this corridor? Or any trucks? So like speed tables are not a good option for, for that? So that wouldn't be a recommendation that I would make because it'll be more disruptive to the neighborhood. Because every time a truck hits a speed table, it makes noise and its lights flash. So the, the bump outs or a raised intersection, if there was a, if there was a stop sign, if there's a place where that might make sense. But all of these are things that would have to be reviewed. That's also reviewed by the traffic commission first and then the DPW. And that wouldn't necessarily, that's, I think, beyond what a pre-existing non-conforming situation would rise to. But the, but the, I think the gateway or along their frontage, if there's, if there's potential for any kind of changes that, of the geometry or, you know, fix, resetting the curb line, that would be the most likely.
So I, yeah, I guess the, one thing I would be a little concerned about, about extending the curb line out is that, you know, for a car to then exit, it might pull more into the oncoming traffic since the roadway would be narrower.
It would be, it would have to have a, so there's all these geometric requirements so that the, the curve would be the right curve? Or, or it would be set back and it would be set slightly back from the entryway?
Yeah.
But it might also create issues for plows. All those things would have to be looked at.
Would, would an extension of the length of the ramp be any type of like mitigator in terms of, let's say, making, making the ramp five feet longer and, and requiring that in fact it flatten out a little bit more? I don't know what the profile of the ramp.
We looked at that already. It didn't, it wouldn't work.
Okay.
It creates, it disrupts the situation in the site.
Okay.
So then you wouldn't be able to access the ramp anymore?
Okay. So for this particular issue, is the way, is there a way to condition any type of, you know, observation after a certain amount of time and tie it into the development or?
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest if, if the board feels strongly that there's a potential for any type of alteration of the, of the sidewalk or street frontage to consider something like, consider street calming with review and approval by the town as a condition. Yeah, no, it's the front, along the frontage of this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, any, any mitigation required as part of that study would have to be tied to some impact from the project. If, if, you know, there's an accident or some other issue from traffic going just through the street that is not related to the site or generated from the site, then we can't attribute the mitigation. There has to be some nexus.
So there's, there's two options. One would be that if you feel that so strongly that there needs to be a better situation at the top of the ramp for this situation, then that would be, that'd be just traffic calming or a change in the way that the geometry works if it's feasible for this project to be approved. Or there's the monitoring. But that would be much more difficult to tie to this project because there's 3,000 cars on this road. Or 2,000? 2,000? 2,000, 2,000, okay. 2,000.
So does the, does the board feel we should try to pull in some traffic calming or?
Could there be like a light or something when a car goes up? You see, like you do it.
Yes. That's, that's typically only used for pedestrian. It's not used.
I see sometimes, I'm sorry, in parking garages where you see the light outside that a car is coming out.
But typically the primary purpose of that is to alert a pedestrian so that they don't walk in front of it. Yeah, but it's not, you can't use on-site lighting to tell people driving along the road that they need to slow down or stop or be aware. But, I mean, anywhere in Boston or especially in Watertown, you know that lots of people actually, we have lots of real roads that have sightline issues and people creep out and traffic accommodates that. And that's, that's, that's the more typical. But if you do have concerns about that, I think you could put a condition there to at least consider some scenarios. I think the applicant had been talking about options, but we didn't take it to that next level with DPW because it's, you know, it's complex. But like adjusting the curb line, making sure that the ramp is built properly at that, at that gateway onto the site.
Okay. And then just one last question. For previous applications, how many units were they proposing on previous roughly?
Well, there was a series, I think it was around 45 and then it was, the final one was 36. But to, to be clear, there was always, they were removing all of the beams on the inside of the building, which would have basically created a, a shell. More of a former, not a, it wouldn't have been supporting the structure as.
Okay, great.
You know, the historic structure.
All right. So I, I'm generally kind of more in favor than opposed. You know, I do have my reservations clearly about, you know, the perimeter and the units. I do think that for the neighborhood, like I would, if, if, I don't, I don't live in that neighborhood, but I'm very familiar with it. I have some good friends who live very close by. I, myself, I think, would feel more comforted in a sense by having it be a residential use versus the type of use which is tied more to a time clock where you might have a lot of people arriving to go to work in the morning, a lot of people leaving at the same time, which might overlap with, you know, kids being out from school, et cetera. So to me, it just seems to be actually a safer use than what might otherwise be taking place in the building. And, you know, and for the conditions we talked about, you know, for the rooftop mechanical equipment and acoustic engineer input, the light well treatment, as we talked about, the perimeter fencing along the east border, the low planting at the sides of the ramp as well as considering some street calming components for the ramp exit as conditions beyond what others have brought in. So unless other people have other comments, if someone wants to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the project with the conditions that you just mentioned. And correct me if I'm missing anything, but it's an acoustic, the applicant submits an acoustical engineering study on the roof units for approval, landscaping along the east and northeast property line, some attention to the window wells and the units that were discussed tonight to ensure adequate lighting in those units. Good consideration of traffic calming at the exit from the ramp in addition to consideration of sightlines with respect to landscape planting. Am I missing?
No.
And, and all the conditions set forth by the planning board in their recommendations.
Okay, thank you. So there's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Second?
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Great, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So is there a motion to?
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn, yes.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you.